...Council of Regular Meetings, September 20th, 2017. Village Hall, first up is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes, additions, concerns?
I'd like to add a unfinished business and resume your administrative thing, so I'm going to take it out so we can discuss it.
Okay, sure.
Division, sign-in report, did we discuss it or you weren't here?
That was that last thing we just, I'd just got.
Yeah. Make it unfinished, see? And also, I'd like to table the minutes, I had a chance to look them all over yet. It's a lot of work there.
Oh, man, I was already. I'm good with that. Because I was going to have either poll or poll for corrections or poll to discuss. So, you're good with?
Table them all.
Table all?
Yep, yep, yep. Get them next meeting.
Next meeting's next week, right?
Next Thursday.
Okay.
Would you guys mind if I, it's probably an administrative report, but pulled out to discuss the sheriffs at the intersections.
Sixty?
Call it sheriffs, yeah, the sheriff slash traffic safety. And I did see those documents, sorry, I just wanted to know something to talk about.
Anything else? I'd actually like the council to consider tabling discussion, consideration, text amendments to signs. Sign ordinance was given to me just on Sunday. I received it, so we talked about having a five-day, and the report's fairly long, and I just want to be able to, I know it's a lot of reading, it's sixty-some pages. I got through some of it, but didn't get through all of it, full disclosure. And just because I didn't have it in a, I know we talked about a five-day period where we would be receiving things, and I received a lot of stuff, quite frankly, on Sunday, so.
Is this the same sign ordinance that you gave us back in January?
Yeah.
I thought it was, and we were ready to do it then, and then you left, and the new administrator had some issues, gave it to you, you've had a chance to look it over again, right?
I had the possibility.
So, you're fine with what we have?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, even then, I didn't expect necessarily you to even pass it tonight, but-
No, it's long enough to discuss.
Because it's long, that we could go through it in parts at least, yeah.
And that's not-
That would be my hope, so.
Okay.
So, are you okay with that, Joe?
Yeah, that's fine, I just, I wasn't sure what we, if we were passing something, and I just, you know, I got into some of it, but full disclosure, I'd not, it's good late-night reading material, quite frankly, so, and it's very-
Yes.
Yeah. Trying to think if there's anything else. No, I think that's it. So, I need an adopt, motion to adopt agenda as amended?
Sure.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is public comment. Do we have?
Yes, we have two people.
All right. So, just remind those who are speaking, ask for your name and address, and you have three minutes, and first up on the list is Kimberly Vandenberg.
Uh, thank you, Ms., do I need to come up?
You can come there, sit right there, if you're comfortable there, that's fine.
I can stand you. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman's staff. I am Kimberly Vandenberg, I reside at 806 Cappington Lane in Marvin. I am currently running for Marvin Council, and I've been attending council meetings and work sessions. I began hearing the current council discussing new Village Town Hall, and cannot find information regarding the new town hall on the official Village of Marvin website. I've been reviewing the Marvin website and the council mission statement. It states, "We will strive to build strong relationships with all of our citizens, and all remember that the role of government is to serve the people. We will be open and transparent at all times." On July 11th, 2017, Councilman Ron Salameo stated, "Most people don't care about Town Hall, that's for us." This statement is a direct contradiction to the current council's mission statement. I've been speaking with members of our community regarding the current council's plan for a new Town Hall, and most that I've spoken with are not informed about the current plans. I would like to request a public information meeting and a public hearing for the new Village Town Hall project. Has there been any sign advertising regarding a public information meeting? In regards to the proposed parcel, has there been any renderings of the building available for the public to view? Has there been an interior design plan completed? If so, where is it for public viewing? Why are you, the current council, not listening to our own planning board when a member said on August 31st, 2017, that the new Village Town Hall, quote, "doesn't work for me," end quote? How are you going to address the power lines that will be obstructing this, the, the new Village Town Hall? Did the current council file an application when starting this project? Again, I have looked on the Village website, and there's no information regarding the new Village Town Hall. It is not under About Marvin, latest news, upcoming events, nor current projects. I have not been able to find any information online regarding the new Village Town Hall. Why would the current council not consider slowing down, consulting experts, and devising a master plan so you can consolidate utilities, stormwater retention, and parking in order to have a village center that accurately reflects the number-one demographic in the state? The current council's own mission statement states that they will be open and transparent at all times and serve the people. In reference to the new Village Town Hall, it seems that the current council has done quite the opposite. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. You write something, did you like to submit that?
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, Kimberly.
Did you want to submit that?
I did.
They can, it's optional. Next up, we have Mike Gilboy. Give me a second, Mike.
Good evening, my name is Mike Gilboy, I live at 126 Stonehurst Lane in Wyndham Hall. I'd like to discuss the hiring of new planner-administrator for the Village of Marvin. During the last work session meeting, current council hired Ms. Mariscoute by a margin of three to zero, rushing to vote since Councilman Dispenzaro was on vacation, was not given the option to vote or share his thoughts on the record about the issue. He's on the record stating that Village had many different applications. The Village clerk stated, quote, "close to fifteen, eighteen applicants." But it was also stated that not one person was interviewed. Mayor Polino asked for a plan to be put in place to interview these applicants, either by current council or a third party, but instead, current council immediately brought a motion to vote Ms. Scoot to the position of permanent administrator and planner. Mayor Polino was on the record stating, "We did not interview any of the applicants," to which current council member Salameo responded, "Yep," and later responded, "We don't have to interview anybody." During the same council meet, same meeting, Councilman Epps is on the record stating, he talked to Ms. Scoot on the phone for two and a half hours, and that he wanted to, quote, "call it an interview." Why for such a major position that helps shape the future Marvin would current council not take all the steps to hire the most qualified candidate? Council was aware at the time Ms. Scoot had a potential lawsuit against her and the Village and the Village of Marvin due to statements and accusations of stalking she made against Mr. Ken Orendorf. The statements and allegations she made against Mr. Orendorf were so inaccurate that they did not even make it to a judge. They were immediately dismissed by a district attorney. Mr. Orendorf asked for an apology, and it attracts him for Ms. Scoot and the council, which was denied, and now, as of Friday, September 15th, the Village and Ms. Scoot are named on a lawsuit brought by Mr. Orendorf, a copy of which I hold in my hand and is public information. Was council aware of this potential lawsuit when they voted to proceed the motion of hiring Ms. Scoot? This hiring of Ms. Scoot is the third time that Village has hired her. This time without even interviewing anyone, including her. Why would current council not do so, not do what is in the best interest of the Village for such a major position that affects the great village we live in? After reading the allegations in the lawsuit, hearing Ms. Vandenberg's concerns, and seeing the poor process failed during the hiring of Ms. Scoot, I'm very concerned that current council is simply not acting in an open and transparent way that is in the best interests, best interests of the residents of Marvin that they represent. I ask that the process be reviewed and changes be made. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
I'd like the opportunity to reply to some of this stuff, because some of it's inaccurate.
You're a resident, Henry, you'll make it.
What's that? I'd like to reply to some of the inaccuracies that I just heard.
You can take three minutes as a resident.
Well, I can also answer a question. I just want to read that, you guys live in town, right, so you get this?
No, I do live in town, but I do not receive that.
And when that was your tax bill? Do you get a tax bill?
No. I mean, I guess I do, I guess it goes to my, I don't know.
Okay, so let me read, this is the second one that went out, and you talk about, no one knew about it? It's been on our agenda thirty-nine times in the last four years. So, it's not something that we're doing at night when no one's around. So, it says here, "The Village Hall is coming, and will face the traffic circle being constructed by North Carolina Department of Transportation at Newtown and Marvin School Road, with an entrance just off the circle, reducing the stress on the transportation system. The location was selected due to property being donated to the Village and availability of water and sewer services, providing a significant savings." So, that's one made, made. Village Councilmen Salameo and Epps, along with the Village Administrator, met with the Hall Engineer ESP and Architect, Urban Architectural Group, to get the status update and project site planning is moving forward, including the construction of a trail around the Village Hall, connecting to the extent of proposed future trails. The site will also include a area design for Village Marvin's market, Farmers Market. The design of the Village Hall is almost completed, and the final cosmetic decisions will be made the coming months. The project will be ready for permitting within the next two months. The Village Council boards and staff are working very hard to bring you a Village Hall that will provide an anchor for the Village and showcase in the Village identity. The last meeting had an opportunity to be at the planning board meeting, and they saw the changes that we made two weeks ago. And unanimously, they were very happy with the changes we made, because it was, we listened to them and we made the changes. That's what, that's what part of being involved is, you get involved with not just certain meetings, but you go to other meetings and you get involved. I'm fine with, you don't need to agree with what we do, but understand, you know, we're looking, we're looking out for the better of the community here.
Did you want that repeated, Mr. Salameo?
I would like that, so.
So, may I, I'll have the floor, then, are you finished?
If you want to talk about the, anything, Brian, you're fine.
I think also, to your point, the Farmers Market was definitely, that's been on the agenda at least six times over the past three years, back when Councilman Open Shaw was on board, and the gentleman that came in and did multiple very deep-dive presentations, same gentleman that set up the extremely successful Farmers Market, not only in Waxaw, but there was another location out towards Monroe. So, it's not like everything's being done in closed session or behind closed doors. There's been numerous conversations with people who have kind of been there and done that, so, things aren't happening in a vacuum. And I know also, in the past, there's been a lot of opposition from the mayor and some of his cohorts regarding the placement of the Village Hall, because it, well, one argument was it didn't face, oh, it faced Union County, so, I've never heard that one before, and then there was a lot of angst brought up about the power lines, and what are we going to do with those? If we'll only incorporate my friend's lot over here into the downtown area, then we can do a massive development, and they'll bury all the lines and do all this movement. So, I just think it's ironic that those same types of things are, seem to be propagated. Unfortunately, there's a lot of facts that really kind of dispel a lot of the myth and what's been raised, but let the fun be done.
Robert, you have any?
No, you go first, and I'll go after you.
No, you get the floor.
It's interesting, this information that gets passed in a public meeting during an election cycle by people who don't know everything, that haven't been to all the meetings. Like Ron said, it's been talked about thirty-nine different times, it's been on the agenda. I don't know why someone doesn't get their tax bill, but this latter has gone out with tax bill. I got it. There has been other information, I think, at a movie night, I mean, it's-
In May?
Yeah, none of this is a surprise.
Yes, no.
But what might be a surprise to the people that just spoke and to other residents is that this has been the works for years, but when a couple of your buddies, Joe, came along and decided they want to do some sort of master development along this throughway, where safety should be the number-one issue, not lining someone's pockets, not profiteering off of an opportunity to have a huge development, commercial development, in the middle of Marvin, in the middle of our throughway, I don't know if these two understand that, but the whole reason the Village Hall has been put on pause by multiple times, and it's been your, your topic of heart for the last several meetings. The whole reason it's being done is because they want our piece of property. Now, we're a landowner, just like anyone else. We're a landowner, like everyone else on this road, that has donated land, it's a perfect spot for Village Hall, it's been in the works, we've spent money, but your buddy wants to slow things down so that they can do their development process, and, you know, using two new folks to be vocal about it, I think is shameful, you know, they don't know the whole story, and it'll eventually all come out, but there's a lot more to slowing the brakes on Town Hall than because someone doesn't, someone thinks that we're going too fast. How, how fast is fast? It's been years, it's been going on for years. It, it, just since I've been here, the design process has taken two years.
Right.
Nobody is trying to do this behind closed doors, or, or trying to speed it up for any reason. It's been slow. I could have built a hundred houses in the amount of time it's taken to plan this Village Hall. So, I'm a little upset to hear stuff like that said publicly by two new candidates that, you know, are using the forum for their own gain and other people's gains, you know, I have to wonder whose investors in this room and what's planned along this throughway, or, you know, what the big ideas are, you know, are you?
You're asking me, am I involved? No, I'm not, not at all.
Because I heard they had a big meeting, did you go to that?
No.
You were up there.
No. What meeting are we talking about?
The landowners' meeting.
Which one? When?
There was one this week.
Did not, did not go to.
You weren't copied on a letter to send out to all the landowners?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. I'm sure that we did.
Assume you were copied, then. Were you copied?
No, someone told me.
Just to finish my thoughts, I get a little pissed off when public safety, when kids' safety, or kids drive through school, I don't know if these two know the whole story about what it takes to monitor traffic through here and with what impact a commercial development would have on traffic, but when safety gets put to the side for profiteering, I get a little pissed off.
Yeah, I don't know where the safety thing is going, yeah, so, okay. Well, I don't know where the safety thing comes in play on that and stuff, but let me start with Ron, I think that's in a newsletter, I believe, that we're-
Yeah, this is reversible, and we talk about it a few different times.
Right, right, I understand that.
Yeah.
And, so, I think she was referring, if I heard her correctly, that she was referring to on a website and stuff, that's constant information and stuff. I have asked for a PIM, Public Information, a full disclosure, yes, I do want, because we're spending one year's full budget on a piece of property that we're going to do this, I'm, yes, I'm asking for that. Are we doing it like we do any other, I mean, every time we see fire, when we have fireworks, we have signs out saying that they're going to have a public hearing, a notice and that. Have we had anything like that for this particular property?
At the-
Is the question.
In May, we did, Joe.
And, and that what you call a public information meeting, if you compare it to other, because you, I think you said in another meeting at one point, you said, "We want to go above and beyond what we're required to do, because we're not necessarily required through our ordinances to have these things, but if we want to be transparent, why not give an opportunity for people to come in and sit, rather than put it on a big poster board, tuck it back in the corner of a movie night that very few people attend, and people write their little comments on it?" Why not have an official public information meeting? Because I think the last administrator notified me and says there was, there was really never one done, and we need to kind of do one, so we were kind of getting by with putting it on a poster board, and you could sign and make, excuse me, you could sign and have little comments on it. So, that's, that's nothing in a hearing, there was no sign put in saying that public hearing is going to be held about what we're going to be doing. Things should take a long time, when it, when it takes, when it comes to government, there's a reason things take a long time, because we want to be sure and get it right. That, that would be my reasoning for it. Yes, I'll, I'll question and stuff, and if you think, you mentioned something about having friends or something, or that, that, these are my people that I'm, apparently have their hand up their back and then talking for them, that is not the case. I, I've only announced that I was going to get to try and know all the candidates that are out there and find out what their platform is, that sort of thing, but I think just coming to some of the meetings, it's, it's apparent that some, some of this stuff is just not necessarily, in my view, disclosed in a way that, that allows the whole public to really get involved in this, and that public information is one, just one example of that. I don't know what you're referring to, friends or buddy, I don't know what that implication was, I have no one tied to anything, I have no involvement in any of it.
You're the one that brought Chip to us.
Yeah, yes.
You brought Chip to us.
That was you.
That was you.
He, yeah, he, as a resident, I said, hey, come talk to the-
He's not a resident.
No, as a resident of the town, I mean, I know he's not a resident, but he lives right next door, I says, if you have something you want to talk to the council, but talk to them.
I mean, you said you're a friend.
Yeah, you said you had your friend.
You're a friend.
Okay, so, okay, so, so he's a friend, so that means, that means I'm aligned with him, and I'm, and he's in, I'm in his pocket, or-
No, 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 no. You're just connected, Joe.
I'm offended at the fact that you guys, I made a vow to this community that I wouldn't touch anything, any real estate at all, not purchasing, not doing anything involved. All I want is the right thing. I will tell you, you had a conversation, you met with the developer, and you didn't tell anybody else, you did.
Which developer was that?
Mr. Lavelle. Did you announce that to us?
No.
That you were in, you just got done telling me a couple of weeks ago that you can't, you can't have a meeting.
He wasn't really talking about development.
I, I know, but he's, he's a developer.
Joe, he's your buddy, he wanted to talk about how we can work to get you reelected, Joe. That was what it was about.
No, I was at the meeting, if you're talking about the-
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you were there.
Well, don't put words in my mouth.
Was it about development, so?
Is this a bromance?
Point of order. Hold on, all right, hold on, hold on, I am just making a point.
The point's ridiculous, Joe.
Well, that's your opinion. Excuse me, I have the floor.
You don't buy your-
I have the floor.
While you're talking, I actually have the gavel.
Please, please, just a second, it was a procedure, when you are engaged in debate, you must pass the gavel off to the vice chair. That is, that is your rule of procedure.
So, I wasn't trying to get in a debate, what, you started the debate because I was talking and you interrupted me, right? So, I was talking, I have the floor, I believe.
You're talking, and you were saying something that I didn't agree with.
Right, and all I've said is, you had a meeting, okay, so if you could please be quiet while I can get my point across, you had a meeting, you met with a developer, you didn't announce it to any of the, I didn't see anything, I'm sure, you know, I'll check with Nick, but I don't think he got a notice that you were going to meet with a developer, but you sat down with them. One, there was a lot of points that, that I learned about, that you, you're talking about doing this, you're so proud to put, make this, this, this project one of the cheapest things in, of all the municipalities that are doing, that have done, because there's talk about Wesley Chap, they spent $2 million on a Town Hall, whatever it was, but you're doing it for so much, I don't know if that's something we want to be proud of, because the most inexpensive way to do something, in my view, is to do it right, okay? Not just plow through with this and not have more than enough public information meetings and information. My point on that, that's a, that's a piece of paper that comes with your tax bill, and by the way, most tax bills are paid in your mortgage, and a lot of people don't even see that. They may open the mail, they may not.
Okay, so, you-
However, no, I'm not done.
You just rammed on, Joe, you talked about lunch, like that.
That's fine, that's, that's your opinion, I have the floor.
We're really not even on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not even on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, I know we're not on the agenda, but I'm saying it's just not on the thing, so.
Kind of sure.
Okay, any, yeah, okay, so, we-
I did have one question, though. You said that the previous administrator sent you an email regarding, you said she communicated you, sent you an email regarding there was no transparency or no she-
No, she didn't send me an email, she just told me there was, she didn't say there's a, I don't know, you're mis, you're mischaracterizing what I said.
You said she communicated with you.
Yes.
I thought you said through email, I was trying to clarify.
No, 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 she communicated with me just saying that there was really never a public information meeting that was held, and I think she shared that with a lot of the councilmen, including-
She brought it up in a meeting, and she said, but we're okay.
Well, yeah, because we're gonna, we're gonna, because we're gonna do this little slideshow over here in, at the park on a, you know, obscure night that was movie night or something. It's not in the spirit of what we do, public information. That is my point.
This was never an issue until someone else wanted that corner lot, Joe, you decided you wanted to move over here.
It's not about the corner lot, it's not about the corner lot, I'm just saying, we're doing this again without a master plan, that's my other point.
You didn't care about the Village Hall, you cared about where it went.
No, and he, all he cares about is the Village Hall, he has it on record saying that he cares that it's just for us, it's not for the town.
For us, Joe?
Yeah, you said that in, in the meeting. Ron, I can quote you on that thing.
Joe, Joe, I said nineteen of the subdivisions don't have places to meet, it's for the community, that's what it's for, Joe. I've been, I've been selling that since we bought the park, Joe.
I understand, I understand.
When you were doing hamburgers, okay?
Yeah.
You know, you weren't involved when we first started to talk about this, Joe.
No, I, I was involved.
We got lots of stuff, Joe, that you've done, that will come out in the next couple of weeks, so you'll be fine.
That's perfect, I'd be anxious to hear.
It'll be all facts, it'll be all facts.
Yeah, and a lot of business facts, too.
And it's obviously done cheaply, we have one of the best architects around working on it, buddy, you know that.
And that was the other point that you made.
You know, you're just trashing points.
No, but that was the other point you made about the architecture of it, and say you were going to have somebody else who's not an architect to look at it.
There's a difference between value engineering-
Yes, that's what you took from him.
You know how much money she saved by having the-
I know, it's all about saving money, isn't it?
No, Joe.
Again, the way you save money, Ron, is-
Get that down, it's not about saving money.
No, no, it's all about saving money for you, the way you save money is you do things right the first time.
But we do, we are doing.
All right, that's, we're agree to disagree, all right.
You're the one who keeps saying, pump the brakes, pump the brakes, that's what you have to say.
I did, I did, because if you under-
And you did very well.
If you understood how things, you know, why we have to-
I do understand.
And we're moving forward with all this without a master plan. Congratulations, good luck with that, good luck with that.
There you go, Joe.
No master plan, you know what, I asked the planning board, and I asked this whole council, has anyone ever put together a town center? Not one person in this room had, including the planning board, no one raised their hand. I said we needed to get educated, I offered that opportunity for you to get educated, absolutely, for you just to listen, and you pooh-poohed them, so, it is what it is.
Well, what was funny was, it's like, two weeks later, you went to Grebel, South Carolina, and you came back about how great Grebel was, and I laughed, because I actually know the person that worked on that whole South Street corridor, he didn't go to Harvard, he's not a developer, but he is a lawyer.
Okay, so-
But, you know, in your world, he wouldn't qua, he wouldn't be qualified, because he's just a lawyer.
No, 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 I mean-
But I thought it was kind of interesting.
You also talked about Davidson, and you raved about Davidson, you have in the past, guess who's on the planning board, Davidson, an employee of Shook, you know, I mean, like, so, why don't we surround ourselves with the people who really know what the hell they're doing? That's all I'm asking.
Why is building a Town, a Village Town Center so important to you personally? Why is building a town, a village town center so important to you personally?
Town center, it's a master plan.
Residents I talk to, they care a little bit more about their own houses, they care about the roads.
They're safe to you, what's gonna bring on the roads, Joe, that's what people want.
But you are so anxious to stick a commercial development in it, and it happens to be exactly what your buddies want.
It's not about a commercial development, it is not about any commercial development, I am on the record, I don't like any of those big box stores or anything, and I think, you know, in some of the stuff that I've seen, I think we're probably more aligned than we think, I've always said, if we do anything, it'll be small boutique type places, that stuff like that. You want to do a piecemeal with 12 different landowners and see it magically come to happen, it doesn't happen without a master plan. So, it doesn't, but you guys might want to move forward with it, that's the only reason that I'm pounding the table on it.
We're all gonna move forward with our village hall, it's really worked for, what, 10 years?
Okay.
You know, you talk about slow, how long? Eight years. On the record, Joe, eight years.
I get it, I get it, they've talked about it.
Don't rush, don't rush.
But don't rush.
Yeah.
Because it's cheap.
Well, just, and just because you get land free, that's where it goes.
No, it's the same.
That's the thing, yeah, I, I would disagree, I would disagree, I would disagree, if you're looking at a master plan and someone could share with you how that works.
It wasn't just some arbitrary piece of land that was given to us for the sole purpose of building a village hall, it wasn't some land we lucked into.
And did we get...
It was negotiated, water and sewer.
Did we have a public hearing on that? I don't even know, did we have a public hearing on that?
Do we have a vote in interest, do our ordinance say we need to do this?
Yeah.
I don't think we do.
Do you want me to answer?
No, I'm asking you, you're the planning, you're the...
God forbid, we, we don't, I mean, if it's not in the ordinance, we're gonna do it, because we don't want to do something above and beyond what the ordinance says.
At the last meeting, the mayor asked us to give him the right to vote when the state statute says you don't vote on adding people to the different boards. You weren't here, you didn't see that, but he had a whole piece about how we should give him, because he won magically by himself, he won against $45,000. No one in this room had anything to do with Mr. Mayor winning twice, once in a right end and once against a $45,000 monster, and we should give him the courtesy of letting him do vote, that's what we were hearing.
Well, it was in the statute.
People heard that, and they were like, are you kidding me? Is this the, I thought, I thought you guys got rid of...
Why are you looking at her?
I'm talking to her.
Yeah, what are you talking about, me?
Well, it is you.
Okay, talk to me.
It was kind of funny, Joe, because you were the big one that said to us when we got back on this board, that, you know, there's a lot of drama coming in here, and we know who it was, it was somebody who was not on here anymore, but she's gone. Guess what, Joe, you're the only denominator here now, it's been you for three years.
So, it's gotta be me. Okay, so it's gotta be me, so I'm the, I'm the third wheel here, so, okay. All right, so we'll move on to administrator's report.
It's probably hard to act in front of them.
He is a little...
I'll try my best. Welcome back, Marla.
Thank you. Some of this, a lot of this, you may know already, just following up on some of the items you had requested from staff, we had a meeting with Marvin Barden, who's, I believe it was on the 8th of, I shouldn't quote, because I don't know exactly, but it was about three weeks ago, I guess it was, where they had requested two things in particular in order to move forward, they wanted a little more clarification with regard to the design review board process, and they also wanted to be sure that there was a cap around the design review board review period, which is typically...
That would be all important, so...
Right, which is typically 60 days maximum, and then if you look at any other process, if the design review board and/or planning board fails to make a recommendation in that time, they have two options, one, nothing, and it just kind of moves on to the village council without a recommendation, or they can ask for an extension, which, by the way, in the 12 years I've been here, has only happened once, and it was a four-day extension, so I've never seen that happen, but still, I wanted to be sure that we checked into that, so here are the updates with regard to those items. Number one, I have created a checklist for Marvin Barden's, it's complete, I'd like to add a few visuals for them to be sure that they feel that much more secure about the process, so I will send that to them this week. And the second item, the 60 days with a cap, was actually already in the code, I couldn't remember and I didn't want to speak at a turn on that day, but as it turns out, that is exactly the same policy replicated in the design review board process, so if the DRB fails to provide a recommendation in that allotted time, then it moves on to the council. And/or they can ask for an extension, which, like I said, very rarely happens. Just so you know, that one time it did happen, the four-day extension was when my father passed away, is why the planning board had asked for that four days.
Was it that clause that they were worried about, the ability to do an extension?
I'm not really sure what...
I thought they were concerned it'd go 120 days and everything's gonna be bogged down.
Oh, you mean Marvin Barden's concerns?
Yes, yeah.
I think they're right that, given...
Yeah, it's gonna get bogged down.
Right, and if you recall their original application, we had no commercial standards for the things they were proposing, so the planning board was sort of writing ordinances almost on the spot to accommodate their plan, and it did take a while.
If that one piece of language is an issue for them, or are we all okay with putting a cap on an extension, in other words, we can't go another 60 days?
Why don't we wait and see if it does come up, and, you know, I think that's a good point to look at, but let's not just change it for the sake of changing it, right?
Well, they came in pretty nervous, and they said, we do what we can to...
But then they, they were fine, you already talked about the 60 days.
They seemed when they left at ease and ready to get out, and I'm planning on, you know, that checklist that I provided, we'll have footnotes to that, but it's up to you, if you want to direct that, that's fine with me, too.
To a point, just wait and see if it's an issue, but I don't...
I was just wondering, they found a developer yet?
Have they found a developer?
Yeah.
I don't know, all I know is I received an email saying that they were getting ready to move forward.
For the commercial piece, is that what you're saying?
In the next couple of weeks.
I assume Saucy Murbek is still in, as far as that.
He said that, he said as far as he knew, Saucy was still in, but he didn't say anything on the commercial side that I can...
I thought he had suggested that they were in talks with one or two.
But he didn't mention it.
He didn't say, not any names.
Okay, so we don't know any of that. I think they were, to your point, they were more concerned about this being dragged on and costing them, and them keep going back, but I think that's what they wanted to get comfortable with.
Or whoever they contract with should feel comfortable with your checklist.
I hope so, and like I did, I tried to put them at ease and let them know that because so many plans and standards were drafted before, and as you've all seen now that the design review board has been in action, things more or less are a checklist, you know, does it look like they said it was gonna look like, does it have, like, per landscaping they said it was going to have, and to be honest, in my experience, it's been some of the fastest review items that have gone through the... In terms of residential development, actually, some of this is, probably needs some degree of updating, I sent you all a note with regard to the Ragnor subdivision bio plaque, as you know, I just sort of recently came on to try to initially, you know, we lost, I guess, an administrative planner, and there were a lot of projects on the table, so I tried to jump in and help out with that. What I found when I went to review their final plaque was that the pump station that was proposed on the development did not receive a conditional use permit, which was required, and so I didn't want to neglect that process, so per my email, they did go through a planning board last night, they did provide recommendations, it was expertise, so council members had to stay away from that meeting, but you'll be provided with a staff reports warning on the day of the CUP. Last, what else is there? You know, minor updates, they had some, I guess, some miscommunications with regard to what was required, they are intent on fixing that, so that should be coming to your next meeting, the Ragnor subdivision bio plaque. Very minor, Bellbrook subdivision, Winmore subdivision, both changed hands, as we were talking about when we came in, so they've been sold off to other developers who are now selling off those lots. There was some confusion with regard to tree mitigation, that's being dealt with, but if you see anything unusual in those areas and passing by, let us know. We have a variance...
Now, when you say let you know, that happened around just recently, if we see something going on, you know, we as council members know a lot more about ordinance than average citizen, if we see a truckload of trees going and having road off of a lot, and we have tree ordinance, what process do you want us to follow?
It's funny that you should mention that, because I did sit down with the code administrator today and also the zoning administrator, and we are going to have a meeting about what's working, what's not, try to solidify that process a little better, but for now, I think it's safest convey it to me, and then I can make sure that the ordinance is investigated and that kind of, you know, even if it's at heart, that there's some sort of a systematic way of kind of calling for, you know, I mean...
And it's not that we're, we're trying to police anything as council members, but...
You notice it.
If this guy over here came in and pulled a tree permit, like Firethorn did, they pulled, they did the right thing, pulled a tree permit, but this guy over here's taken down five heritage trees, and doesn't know that he, maybe he doesn't even know he's supposed to be...
A lot of times they don't, yeah.
So, we want to help where we can.
No, and so, yes, for now, until I can spell that out for you, please let me know first, and I'll make sure that it's passed on. Land use policies, you have the 2017 land use plan in front of you tonight, the draft, of course, I don't expect anyone to be passing that tonight, it is a large document, and still undergoing, I wouldn't say major revisions, but whatever we can do to kind of make it shorter, and I've provided suggestions to planning board for that, and I'll convey that to you tonight as well. So, they've gotten halfway through, I feel like if whatever they've gotten through, the plan, the council can also get through, then we're on a good path, you know, to move forward.
It's an impressive document.
Well, thank you, thank you. I found, went through a lot of templates, and I hope I found a template that I think worked for Marvin, so I appreciate that. Thank you for your last meeting, I have drafted amendments to the tree recruitment removal permit process, to the temporary use permit process, the sign ordinance, we worked on that this week, thank you so much, we'll make sure that, we've proposed changes to make sure that they abide by the most recent Supreme Court ruling.
On the tree ordinance, I know we're changing that and stuff.
Yeah, switch one for the other.
So, we approved the verbiage on that, right?
No, what you did is you approved having me draft language that will go through the proper channel, so it will then go to the planning board and then come back to you guys.
So, my only concern is, because I thought there was something written in there that said something like, if a tree is dying, that we still have to go to you and get a permit for you to confirm that that's dying, so my question would be...
Not an application, not a permit, but...
Right, or an application, whatever.
Right.
So, if in that timeframe, they're just throwing a scenario out there, the tree, that that particular tree falls down and stuff because they had to get a process, does that make us a little bit, put us out there from a liability standpoint? Because this tree at Firethorn was, I mean, it looked fairly structurally sound, but when they cut it down, it was completely rotted out on the inside and taking the time to have it...
Isn't it a clean one day?
Oh, yeah. In terms of inspecting it?
Or, well, no, because then they take it down, it's now safe.
Well, number one, there's two different codes within there, not just the one in dead and dying, but there's also a provision for emergencies, so if it's an emergency, for example, something's really literally falling, then there's, that is still permitted, but if it's just suspected of being dead or end or dying under the tree permit section of the code, you still have to provide the application, and typically, within that same day, one of us is driving by to take a look, thankfully, the city's not too big.
So, to your point, Joe, if someone were to indicate, do you have a form, are you doing a form?
I have to redo them, that's the other thing, remember that...
So, there was a checkbox, is this an emergency, to me, that would say, let's go check it today.
If it's an emergency, they can go ahead and do what they need to do, or the village would, depending on, you know, who's responsible for the tree, but emerges, I don't have the text in front of me, but it does say, like, imminently, you know, in danger of falling, we don't mean a dead tree that's grounded in the ground, we're talking about roots up, tilted over, hitting a wire, on a fence, something to that effect.
Does that satisfy your...
No, I just was curious about if, who's writing it, how we're writing it, and who's actually looking at it, if that's Derek, or who actually does the inspection, I assume he would be, because he's the code enforcement guy, right?
Well, there's, you have three zoning, well, maybe two, and that's something I have to talk to you all about, but zoning administrator in the village only means that you're authorized to enforce and/or interpret the code. By the time I make my request with Derek, we'll get to that in a minute, you will have three people who are able to do that, and so if something is in imminent, you know, danger of falling, any one of us can go out there and, and look at that on short notice. And, well, to be honest, if it's imminent, like I said, that work, that's...
I just know, for example, that Firethorn had looked at this tree for over six years, we've been trimming it, doing all that stuff, we've had numerous companies come in and look at it and stuff, and now we're gonna put one more step in there to kind of, they clearly said it was dying, but from the village standpoint, we're gonna put one more step in there to say, oh, before you cut it, let's, let's go get this permit, so that, I just kind of question that, when you have an HOA that certainly didn't want to lose that tree, but had experts looking at it for six years, who are experts if a tree is dying, to come back and say, okay, that's not, we're basically saying that's not good enough, so I guess that's my, if I'm thinking out loud, that's my concern about how we write this and what that verbiage says, and it just kind of handcuffs a community that, you know, obviously has done the due diligence to, you know, determine if it's...
Six years to pull a permit, so...
Not six years to pull a permit, they wanted to see what they could do.
Application.
Application, application. I think the point of the whole ordinance, Joe, is just to keep people like what I saw and reporting.
And I know that happens, too, yeah, I know that happens, yeah.
Yeah.
Not for people who do it right.
How do you discern between...
You have to trust and verify.
Well, the law can't be that specific that you say, well, we're gonna trust HOAs, but we're not gonna trust a citizen.
Right.
It has to be equal and uniformly implemented, and so by that point, we also have people who will, when you say, hey, did you tear down a tree, they'll say, oh, yeah, but it was dead and dying, well, how would you know that if it wasn't...
Sort of in haul, right. Yeah, and we're not here just to protect the person that has the tree, but the person that lives next to the person has the tree.
Right.
That's what it is.
Or anyone driving by the tree, I get it, okay.
Oh, sorry, it's still me. Land use plan code ordinance is, where were we? Finance, I just wanted to give a shout out to the finance officer who has really done some great work, she did under the former administrator, but it's really come in handy for me and I think for the rest of the staff, in terms of, you know, well-crafted spreadsheets pretty much covers it, and in terms of managing capital prep improvements, so I just wanted to let you know that. In terms of personnel, the park manager has recommended someone for to develop a part-time employment position, I interviewed them today, they should be starting next week. We've also have the qualification of probably a year and a half's worth of ordinances, and that process is underway. Per your last meeting, a visitor sign-in log was created.
Shouldn't that take place once a year? Did we ever set up that it was automatically going to be done in, like, November?
Yes, if not twice a year, depending on the number, but...
So, it's all for the facts.
Yeah.
Just curious, so we have one applicant, we're interviewing one applicant, we're hiring one applicant, which is exactly what we did with Barbie and Robin Stuber and with you.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that those sitting here realize there's a consistency of using common sense and hiring the most qualified applicant rather than just interviewing 15 people for the sake of having said I interviewed 15 people. That's all I wanted to say.
Can we scroll down a little bit, I just want to look on that, Mary, if you don't mind scrolling down.
Sure, up, down, up or up?
Down.
Down here?
Okay, so finance budget, general update, okay, so that's, then administration, I have a different sheet in front of me, it says...
Yeah, I just produced a few, a new one for you tonight, and I think I put it on the very top.
Okay, because the original one, it talks about finance staff doing an exceptional job, I just want to make a do a shout out, I think that's our clerk that did that, so, and I, you know, wanted to make sure we...
Did you, what, did you...
Regarding the getting caught up with meeting minutes and stuff like that, if that's...
Oh, yeah, no, that's a different, that's a different sheet.
Okay, it looks identical, so you have, we have two different reports, then the staff report and then administrative report.
No, there's two administrative reports, so the one I issued over the weekend, I realized, one, I had updates to it, and two, there were certain corrections, so I printed it off for you tonight and put it on the very top of here.
Okay.
And this, I'm looking at the same one I handed out, and I can print another copy.
That's all right, I'm... In the future, if we can do a version one or version two, is that why, you know, yeah, use your file, thanks.
You know, fine, I can do that.
Just saying, I'm sure you wrote it up, I was following the wrong one, too.
Oh.
Okay, because they, they look identical, and I'm, I see where this one is not the same as... same as.
No, you did the right thing, I just didn't flip it over.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm good.
The color, I think mine came out in the most recent version.
Yeah.
That's different. Okay, so, moving on to personnel, I mentioned that, qualification. As you know, I wasn't here at your last meeting, but I did see that you had requested a visitor sign-in log be created, and, which was fine, that was created, I think it's on the back of the policy sheet. But what I didn't see was a policy for that, and I think it's probably a good idea, even if it's an inter-office policy. So to follow up on your request, you'll see that I proposed a policy for you tonight to look at. It doesn't have to be passed tonight, but I wanted to be sure that, that I had provided it. Roads and public works, from what, again, trying to get caught up on some of these projects that were underway, from what I understand, the bid packages were issued, and no bids were received in response to that RFP, and.
That was a couple weeks ago, though, wasn't it?
Right.
Yes. Right, I'm just giving you the recap.
Oh, okay, okay.
Excuse me, correct me if I make sure I got it right.
No, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I'm not sure. But since then, Ms. Blackwell did reach out to our engineers, because the last thing I believe we heard was that they might want to revise that bid package to see if they could entice more responses. The other thing I had suggested that we do is, I asked Ms. Blackwell, I'll do it as well, to go on to the Lister and ask other municipalities where their most likely to get successful RFPs. So we've done that, we might have some suggestions for reissuing that.
And just from constructions, go ahead, Joe.
No, I just was curious, so like, which, do we have anybody in mind?
Do you want to update now?
Yeah, on, on, oh, we have it, we have it on the agenda, yeah.
So do you want to give direction to Ms. Blackwell after?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Yeah, so this is just an update.
I was just going to comment on the construction world right now. Everyone's just so saturated with work that it's, it's difficult to get bits on the small stuff.
Okay. And again, she'll probably talk to this.
I have a solution for that.
I think you guys have all combined that, right? Yeah, so I'll let her talk more to that. Meetings and updates, oh, right, Village Hall, that's coming up, so I skipped it here.
Yep.
Tree permits, I had, again, only been able to kind of catch the meeting minutes from your last meeting. I'm hoping that I was able to clarify the difference between a tree permit application versus a tree permit, tree permit, tree removal permit. So no need to really rehash that here unless you have further questions. But just to let you know that I did address that question to a resident in Firethorn, and I believe I provided some clarity. That said, our code is not entirely clear. You really have to know the whole chapter to understand the process. The little clip that's on our current tree permit is a little misleading, you know, it's on the list of things to do now that I've gotten a chance to sort of look at the office on what things can be improved. And yes, my, there was a minor edit. I had provided you all with an admin task sheet, which was not by any means official, just to, I wanted you to know what I was able to accomplish in the first two weeks that I was here, before I had to run off and take my daughter to university, out of the country. And there was a mistake on the sheet, and someone corrected that, just to let you know. And I think that's it, everything else is just, oh, wait, there's a correction. And this is more or less put together just for your information, and that's it, that's all I've got.
I can add a question with regards to the previous administrator deleting all the emails which are public record. How successful were we at retrieving deleted files from the cloud?
It.
Including attachments?
You want the truth? It took about five some odd hours just to retrieve them, because we had to, you could only retrieve them in bulks of eight at a time, so whatever was on your screen, you know, you had to click the boxes and then retrieve them, and there were upwards of 4,000 some odd emails. It was difficult to tell which were important and which weren't, but it took an awful long time to get them all back.
What success rate would you, because I thought, I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I'd heard something that some attachments did not restore?
Yes, that's true.
So that being said, we, we have a responsibility to report that to the archives, because it was a purposeful intent to delete public record, so we need to investigate that process and go through the steps. So I think you need to, from a legal standpoint, I know it's a misdemeanor, a classic misdemeanor, punishable up to $500 or something, but from a board perspective, the board's aware of it, we need to go through the proper channels to document it, because there could have been.
So there's the attachments to the email?
It sounds like some attachments, if somebody had an attachment to the email, maybe it didn't restore, and I don't.
There were, on occasion, there would be reference to an attachment, and the attachment would not be there. And, but that's all I can tell you about. But I, you know, it's hard for me to know what was.
Well, you don't even know what was there, so you don't know if the whole era, that's the sad part of this.
They were definitely deleted, that I know.
Right.
Because I had to contact support, and actually it was you who kind of inspired me to say, hey, check with her to see if there was a vehicle for restoration, and thankfully there was. And I only say thankfully because, as you can imagine, under the circumstances under which I was employed for two jobs, planner and admin, not having any context or background about what projects were happening, where they were.
Maybe we'll read you for you, right?
It was, it was kind of vital, yeah.
I think, it's unfortunate, but that's the whole reason we moved to cloud, you know, cloud doesn't really go away.
Yeah, that was great.
It's almost like social media, right? When something's posted, it sort of exists forever. But if you could investigate what our responsibilities are borders, because I think we have a responsibility to report that or document.
We don't then make a motion to that, right? It's just, does that, I assume it's just coming from, okay.
That's just a request that they're asking.
Yeah, give them directions. That's the law, I don't know if we have to.
Joe's right, we did agree that if we're giving any direction to anybody, we'd agree and.
Okay, make a motion.
Our consensus.
I think it's just a consensus.
Unanimous consent, if you all agree.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I do have one question, oh, sorry, go ahead and finish. Is Archives a group?
You know, it's the state archives, it's where your, all your minute books, your ordinances and all, all the permanent records are stored and archived and put on various microfiche tape discs, however you want to go, they, they store them.
They also provide a lot of policies around.
There's a lot of training.
I actually thought they were self-stored, and we had them self-stored for a number of years.
We do.
There are permanent records that we have to store as a permanent record for a number of years. Personnel records, to be a fact, are 30 years, some of them. Your financials, some of those are three to seven, 10, depending on what they are. But your permanent records, as far as your, your agendas, your minutes, all your ordinances, your text amendments, everything is, is copied and sent to the archive for them to, to restore and keep, keep as permanent record. We can get a copy of those as a digital form in that way. And each year, you go through your schedule and you determine, you know, a scheduling for each one of those permanent documents.
So we send them regularly, that's probably the worst part of the workshop, I think.
And, and we purposely don't send one minute book at a time, because they're in Raleigh and we're in Martin, so we either have to ship it there, which is going to be a lot of money. What we generally do is get, get the minute books and take them when they're going to be at a Clark conference, because they can pick them up, and, and then you do an ordinance as to what, which ones are, are being restored at that time. And then they take them and they do them. But a co, a copy of them are, is, is done before they're ever taken, so you, you, you're not ever without it.
Okay. To Ms. Scoot's point, though, they do set the policies and procedures around records or tensions, so.
Okay, if that's a manageable.
Thank you. Is there any more waters standing?
There's, they're right there behind you.
Behind you.
This is the best seat in half.
So these are two different things.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Is anyone in the audience who want?
Anyone?
Lost my agenda.
You want? Do you need to find out to ask me for your comments?
Okay, so we tabled five. Since there's no consent agenda, oh, we are, that's all the minutes, but I need a motion for amendment B to rule 14. Counsel's rule of procedure.
It's just on the consent agenda.
They adopted consent agenda. Can I ask a question about that rule 14? We're talking about.
If you have technical, you should pull it off if you want it for discussion.
Okay. And that's, on that rule, that was regarding.
That was given.
That's what we had talked about.
Inserting a clause.
Right, right, there was.
Oh, yeah, okay, now I'm good, I'm good. And I just need a motion to adopt the consent agenda. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay, thank you.
I feel none of us had a problem pulling it off, are you sure?
No, 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 I'm, I'm good. I, I was misremembering what that was for rule 14, so we're good.
That's the order of business.
What's that?
The order of business for the agendas.
Okay.
That was when you were discussing public, the council comments.
Oh.
On the 31st.
Okay, well, we already passed it, I just, yes.
You might have to take a two-minute break.
Absolutely, call, two-minute break for a bio break.
Bio break, yeah.
I can tell you the options.
Make sure your girls are in trouble, right?
He made it up there. By a short word.
I know, right now. You've never heard that?
No.
You've heard of it, too? I'm sorry.
It's good though, I like it.
Please call it 10-1-90, I don't know.
What's that?
10-1-90.
I don't know, I know, knowing you, I'm frustrated about that.
10-1-90.
Nope, not going in.
Got to tell dispatch when you're off.
I forget my call again. Did you read from this? This right here?
Yeah.
Is that the only, is that the only, the only page?
That's it.
Okay.
I agree with you, it's hard to find stuff on the website at the town hall, but in the agendas.
You can see it when you're in my car.
What's that?
You can see it when you're in my car.
This agenda, so on the website, you look at this agenda, you can see a rendering, if you click on the link.
Plus, the tires on a horse trailer, and then three nails on the, the driver, the horses coming out.
But this agenda actually has renderings to the town hall.
There's a high order.
And there links all the agenda, the law is supported by it, so.
Sorry.
His daughter takes him to school, doesn't it? That hurt? My daughter drove.
Is that the woman at the library?
I don't know, I have everything else out.
Well, there's a room in.
Yeah, we do have a big room, so.
No, no, no. If I'm here, you're here.
I see her every day driving.
Did somebody say something about Sasha's tires? I heard something about this, there's some nails in horse tires.
They had them a few days ago.
Didn't you type it out?
It was not.
Like.
Robert's not.
No, my own insurance.
Someone will carry you.
They put insurance on that, they told me what kind of put on it. I told them I was a payboy, so I'm going to need to put more on.
I think, we're not, I'm wondering if we should do this, update the officers first?
But I, I had.
Do the what first?
Most people do that, actually.
This first.
I mean, if they're a lot, they are. It doesn't have that.
Yeah.
You can try that, you can try it back.
Thank you.
I've got C as sign-in process, and then D as sheriff's side safety.
Oh, say that again.
From the amendment, we.
We added.
Sign-in process was on C.
C, that's new C.
Oh, okay, and where was the?
And that's D.
And then D was safety.
Okay, thank you.
Fear of updating it live.
Yeah.
Real time.
Five acts.
Okay.
I forgot already, what's C? Sign-in policy?
Signs.
Thank you, sign-in policy.
Bio break, carb break.
Hey, carb break, mind. All right, um, where are we? Unfinished business, 6A, discussion consideration 2017 land use plan Village Center District. Administrative update, preliminary feedback, questions, comments, and scheduling.
So I was just thinking, because this is lengthy, is there any interest in changing the order and going through the simpler things first, or do you want to just go through as we've got it? Just occurred to me now.
You guys want to hear the traffic stuff, so move that up.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Did you call the meeting back to order?
Oh, I'm sorry, you need to call the meeting back to order? I thought I did, but, okay. Next up is 6, 6A unfinished business, discussion consideration 2017 land use plan Village Center District, administrative update, preliminary feedback.
Yeah, we're going to change, do the two small ones first, so some people can leave, and then the crystal other ones are larger.
So we're going to move.
So we're going to make A, A.
D?
D and B, C.
So we're going to motion the sentence.
Suspend the rules, okay. So you want the administration report log, because that was on C. You want that moved up?
Uh, this dude off duty first thing first.
Okay, that was you, right, Robert?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll make that A, 6A sheriff, traffic safety.
And then CB.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's administration report, you wanted to add something to that, right?
That'd, that'd be the, the sign policy.
Okay.
And the land use C and D, or the sign C?
Yeah, that's fine, they're both long. Which one you want to go first, Mary, going to sign or?
It's up to you guys, which, whichever, probably.
Will we put a time limit on?
Well, we're not going to go to.
Yeah.
I mean, let's have a hard cap on, on, on both of those, quite frankly, because.
And we got a meeting next week, too, so this should be something where we can follow up on these two, because.
Yes, but you want to lock off, take it from me in the planning board, you want to lock off.
I thought they did good last night.
Good bites, because otherwise you never go through it. But I agree, you know, I, I wouldn't expect you to go through all of it tonight.
No.
Do we?
Do we have a motion on the table to receive rules?
We do have a motion on the table to suspend rules.
Suspend the rules, and then.
And then reorder, and reorder.
Reorder, do a shuffling of it, do we have to say with that shuffle?
You did, okay.
So we're, did you get that? We're moving sheriff and traffic to 6A, we're moving administrative report to 6B, we're moving land use plan to D, and signs to, wait, did I get that right, to C, and then signs to D. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
To Joe's point, let's put a time limit on when we get to the land use plan, like an hour and 15 minutes, and then we go to the next one, an hour and 15 minutes.
And I'm sorry, the sign ordinance you're doing.
D.
We'll do that second.
D.
Yeah.
Sorry, read it for me again, only because.
You got it right.
Is that right? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good, I just want to be sure, I just want to make sure I'm doing the sign.
So what we have is 6A right now, sheriff and traffic safety, I think, Robert, you have that?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we approved putting the sheriff's deputies out there, well, we did two things. We said, let's put them out there longer, you know, they were, they were leaving early in the mornings, and, you know, the kids and everyone needs them longer. So I noticed they've been doing that, they seem to be there, but what I also noticed is they're, I don't remember, especially on the hurricane week, it's sporadic on when they're there and when they're not there. And I realize our deal with them is that, I think there was a murder investigation, you know, last week. I realize they get pulled off, but is there any, I guess my question is, is there any sort of backup, is there any other way to organize it? Because it seems like the days we need them the most, when it's raining, especially on a hurricane, or threat of hurricane days, they weren't there. And I don't blame them, they do a great job, but when everyone needs them the most, it seems to be the days we don't have them. So there's that. And then the evening crew that we approved, almost 40 grand to keep them out there, spread the best from what I've seen.
Right, no, that's overtime sign up, so there's an officer that's in charge of the
But when everyone needs them the most, it seems to be the days we don't have them. So there's that. And then the evening crew that we approved, almost forty grand to keep them out there, spread best from what I've seen.
Right. No, that's overtime sign up, so there's an officer that's in charge of the sign up sheet. And then if they're not out there, we're not paying for it.
I get we're not paying for it, but-
But we want to charge.
That's no consolation, maybe because I want them there.
No, I got you, but I'm saying it's a conscription type, basically they have to sign up for overtime. It's not like normal, a normal shift.
I guess my question would be, maybe it's something for you, Mary, to check into is, how mu- how long in advance do we know that they're signed up for? Because if we could get a commitment, my problem, to your point, has always been, they're off duty officers, right? And they are volunteering to sign up and we're paying them. So when, but when something comes up of issue of importance, they get pulled off, but they're off duty. So I think it comes down to the negotiating with the county sheriffs and saying, look, we're paying them to be there, we expect that they're off duty. And I know they have a car and all those things, but the problem lies in with them being called off so much, or not signing up. So having a longer sign up time where we can get an idea, do we have someone in there to, to cover that? Because I agree, we get, we need them there, and that's why we're, we're doing this before the, the roads come in, and they're gonna continue to be needed there.
And I know you have an update for us, Mary, but two thoughts. And, and this is just a bandaid, the roundabouts are coming.
Right.
We also looked into doing a three way light, but DOT said it wouldn't work.
Okay.
I don't know if you were here for that one.
I don't think it works.
I knew that that's what they wanted in their proposal, and the last I heard, Chris was going to look into that light. While I was gone, she was quite, so she-
The light may still be up to that crash, but the three way stop was a no.
Stop was a no.
So it was NCDOT that said no in the end?
They did a study and said it would back up four thousand feet.
Okay.
Uh, they said the queues would be longer than two minutes, I'm not sure, it seems like our queues now are longer than two minutes. And they just said it wasn't acceptable, because it would cause a mile long backup. And that's based on their expertise, so I'm not doubting that, but-
If you don't mind, for my information too, was that something recent?
I think that was when Robin was here.
Okay, so here's what's interesting, because since then, it was actually Jay Schuler who said that one of the conditions, um, and I put this in the email when I contacted you about hiring them or going into contract with them. That one of the conditions the sheriff's officers had wanted, at least on Marvin Road and Newtown, was a, was a light of some kind. Um, I'll be honest, I really didn't understand what they meant, but first did.
I think it was a task light, though, it's not a, it wasn't a stop light, it's more-
So people can see them.
That, yeah, that, they were alive here, because it's twilight, that nobody could see, and there was a safety issue.
And they were good to do a test.
Right.
They did, I was there.
Yeah.
They did, and there was an accident while they were there.
Isn't that crazy?
Just as fast as-
No, 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 this was, this was a year ago or so, when it was the daylight savings.
But they prescribed it for this term, is what, I guess where I was confused, because having just come back, you know, this week, that was one of my questions for Chris was, what, and Jay, was what happened to the light that they wanted?
Let's give them what they need, because we do them.
Heard they, right, and that was part of what, when we budgeted, you know, we gave you that budget amendment, we included the cost of renting that light.
The light, yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
And then we needed NCDOT to come out and look at where we would, um, be able to install it or-
If we're doing some sort of light, we have to communicate with Metal Art, though. I mean, they need to have, what do I need to know?
As you rent for a football game?
Well, they, that's what they used, just to see how it would work, but I think that the ultimate goal was to, and because that is still twenty twenty-two, is what I'm hearing, that put something in there more permanent where it would be. But they used the task light that they pulled behind the trailer, so I didn't know if they were talking about, okay, every night they come, someone's pulling the trailer with the task light when we're in, they, or are we? Because I think there was a time when we looked, and that was back when Lisa was here, that we looked at with the utilities, where they would put that light.
Right, and that was one of the things that came up, and so they, we, we, at least, again, telephoned, but Chris had said that she would get the cost for the light, that we would need to meet with Swan, NCDOT, and nearby residents, because it may have to be placed or need, um, pertinences placed on private property in order to work. I honestly, I had never seen that whole thing instituted, so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, why, um, why we haven't heard-
Can we talk that out to you and Chris?
Yeah.
I say with a smile.
Yes.
But where I was headed, and the reason I wanted to add this to the agenda is, love the sheriffs, uh, my first choice would be having them out there, but have we considered, or is there another third party? Is there, you know, if, if it's difficult for them, is there another municipality like Waxaw that has their own police that we could hire?
To your point, Waxaw does, do traffic mitigation for the private school off of Crane Road.
So can we-
In that curve, you know, the one that's right there at that curve?
Yeah.
There's Waxaw, that's the East Mountain or-
So maybe split it to one and one where the other?
So I'm thinking out loud again and stuff, and I say every morning when I drop my kid off at the Marvin Elementary, that, instead if the officer's not there, that guy directing traffic is hired by the Union County. He's awesome, he's really good. And, and, and hiring someone like, may even be less expensive, but then you got a situation where he's directing traffic out there, and is he?
Libel.
I mean, where does the liability, but I know the Union County schools hire him, and then once that's done, he goes over to Crane, and he-
Does a great job.
And he does a great job over there, too. So, I mean, thinking out of the box and not being tied into the county sheriffs is approaching the county schools and say, hey, is, can we think about putting someone in, whether it's over here in the morning, or over here? And I'm sure they have people that can do it, I just, it, it becomes a safety issue, because you got a car that's got flashing lights, you got a lot of attention, you're slowing down, just because you're approaching an area that has flashing lights.
I went down that same road when I, because I drive by that guy in middle school every day, and he's wonderful, and I thought the same thing, but there is the liability issue, there is the, you know, because he become an employee of ours, and the risk is great. But also the authority thing, this is, and this is where I sort of my thought process stopped. It's easy for us as Marvin residents to respect someone directing traffic, because we know the need and because our kids go to school. Now, you got the drive-through traffic that we know is probably more than half of it, of construction workers, and just people just going about their daily business. Are they gonna stop for the guy with the orange t-shirt as opposed to a police officer? You know, are we putting someone at risk on a main thoroughway, um, that doesn't have the authority to actually do something if someone doesn't listen? And that's where I sort of stopped at that one, was, and then why I thought, well, why don't we see if Waxaw officers need overtime, you know? We approached them about maybe helping pay for it, and I think we got a reality, no.
Yes.
But if we were willing to pay their officers to help fill in, would that be worthwhile pursuit?
Okay.
And not just that, I'm using them as an example, there might be, who else has officers? Those Indian Trail?
Their sheriffs.
Their sheriff's.
And I'm, I'm not this, I have no idea either, but I'm thinking, if, if there was a contract company that offered it as a service, they would probably be licensed and have their own insurance as well.
And liability.
Uniforms, you know, uniforms would be important. Sounds silly, but from what I've seen people do to the sheriffs, just imagine doing it to the guy that's used, you know, in his civilian clothes.
And has, has no authority to go after.
Right.
You know, I mean, yeah.
They're just blowing by to get to work.
Yeah. I like that, maybe, and with the agreement with Waxaw saying if we're paying the off time officers, that they're not on call to go to other, but I would assume they would have a vehicle with them if it is an off, officer. We may get them for cheaper, you never know.
And the end result, you know, I had those ideas, but the end result is, I just, we'd like to see consistency out there.
I was, yeah, I agree.
And while we're on the subject, I actually stopped one of the officers there just yesterday, and he was there at three thirty, which I thought was a little bit early, because there was just me there, and I waved him over, and we chatted for a bit about, you know, what his schedule, and I saw in one of the minutes that we talked about as early as three thirty to six thirty, understanding that the shift change is at four thirty. So that's why you have a hard time getting people on a regular basis, and it's hit and miss right here on the corner, because their shift change comes in at four thirty. So a lot of guys aren't taking that. He was there at three thirty, and I think we have a three hour window. My suggestion is, if we're gonna hire an off time officer, at three thirty, have him drive through the community, and just, you know, do rounds, because he doesn't need to be there.
I don't mean to disagree with you, but if we're hiring him for that purpose, even if he's just standing there and people know that he's gonna be there for the next three hours, it's fine, but I, I want him there, I want him at the intersections. I don't, if he goes off over here, and this is what we ran to in the mornings, those guys were leaving, they were starting, I think, at six thirty, and then they saw a slowdown, so they'd go over here to Joe Carr, which was great, because it's, you know, I-
And sit and talk.
Face Joe Carr.
Yeah.
And it slowed down traffic there, but I don't, I care about everybody, but I'm more worried about the high schoolers that are, you know, new to their licenses, the parents that are trying to get somewhere and have a hundred things on their mind. I want him there on those intersections, directing traffic from six thirty to nine thirty without leaving, and if it takes, starting over here at three thirty to get them there at six thirty, I will take that every day over them not showing up at all.
I-
I'd rather not divert him over, if he drives off and says, all right, I'll go check this out, what if something happens?
Yeah.
What if he, he has a call, or sees something happen, or, or there's an incident, he's got, he doesn't make it back over there?
I'll, I'll, I'll walk that back, because now that I think about it, at three thirty, right around that time, there's school buses that go right through there.
First bus comes to Meadow Lard, two forty-five.
Two, two, yeah, because that comes through there, and that is a very dangerous, you know, but so really, it comes to two forty-five?
No, two forty-five's elementary school, they do Firethorn, Meadow Lard, and Innisbrook on that bus, and they have to come through that intersection.
And then, and then negotiate that out, so in the afternoon, it's definitely-
He's just going down and turning around the state line, trying to avoid some of it.
I know, I see him every morning, so I, I'll walk that back, and I agree with you that the three, two, in fact, even earlier would probably be better, just, but it's, it's that three hour window, it's just the ma- the most traffic comes in right around, I'm guessing, six o'clock timeframe, five thirty, five?
Starts line, four thirty, four thirty.
Five, yeah.
And if I got fired up earlier about the commercial development, it's because of this, it's because of what we're dealing with. And all I ever hear from people, well, I know firsthand, you know, my daughter, we talked about it, she has that little truck, she drives about thirty-five miles an hour, like I want her to, like her grandma. You know how hard it is to pull out in traffic, thirty-five miles an hour in here? And I worry about her every morning, she's gotta call me when she gets to school, okay? Which I, you know, I can't put a bubble around her, but what I can do is, what, what is within our power, and that is to put sheriffs out there to push roundabouts. What I don't want to do, and I, I, this is what I got fired up over, is when I know there's a group of guys out there, or people, trying to do a large commercial development plan for this short little run of traffic, where we're trying to fix the traffic, and they want to put commercial development here, it pisses me off. You know, they're, it's, it's for their own wallets, they're doing it, but we're doing it to protect-
Right.
Residents.
Yeah.
And we're getting, hold on a second. We're getting, you know, mixed messages and, on, on ways of making it happen, and stop the village hall, and do this and do that, all for the sake of a large scale commercial development in the middle of our downtown area, where we're trying to fix traffic. All that would do is screw things up.
I, I, I don't, I don't want to relive that, obviously, and stuff, and I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I, there's not even a plan out there yet, or and stuff, but it's, it'd be, I think you'd be surprised on what they can do, and that's what I, I think I learned from Terry Shook, when you can do certain things-
You're advocating for him right now.
No, 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 I know.
Joe, don't advocate for him right now.
I'm, I'm just saying, he's an individual that does this for, I mean, and if you feel-
Joe, you're the mayor, do not advocate for a large scale commercial development.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not advocating.
I'm trying to stop you.
I know, I'm not advocating for it, in fact, I, I, I actually, I, I want to see this done right in, in a master plan, we've heard numerous times, right over in their neighborhood, that that owner there wants to pay us to help do that roundabout, and he wants higher density, or initially wanted higher density, and I'm like, that, to me, is forever, higher density. But slowing down the traffic, we all want the traffic, that's why, you know, I, I banged my head against the wall saying, if, if we went to, basically told, we went to NCDOT and say, if we pulled all the funds that we have available to put towards that intersection, and, and give, and do it in today's dollars, and give us an IOU that you pay, because it is their dollars, but it is, I want the traffic circles done first, period, period. And then you can talk about anything else, but they call, they're, they're calling it town center, whatever that is, whatever town center is to anybody here. I don't know what that is, I mean, it's, everybody, we, we talk about it in, in our meetings.
Well, just, as long as we're focused on safety first.
I agree, absolutely.
And you mentioned twenty twenty-two, I'm pretty sure we're on the fast track, those guys were out there-
Survey.
Surveying this week, was this week?
I talked to them, yeah.
They've been in there all week.
They did say for staff, just so you know, that, because I actually pulled over and went and talked to them, found out who they were and stuff, he said, do, please let the owners know that they will be contacting them to get on their property, so they can do the survey and stuff, so, very encouraging.
Can I interject with an update I forgot about?
Well, let me just-
You might be interested in, this Friday, NCDOT invited me to a, um, stiff meeting about our roundabouts, and an update, um, so I wanted to let you know that I, it was just yesterday or this morning, I'm sorry, I can't remember when I got it, and I haven't had a chance to go through it, but they called and they said, oh, we forgot you, um, and are you available Friday morning? So I'll let you know more about that, but it sounds like things are moving.
Good. But Joe, when you talk to people, are you telling them it's twenty twenty-two? Because that's not what I understand.
Well, it, it's that, you know, I'd rather under promise and over deliver. I mean, that's the problem with NCDOT, they've been telling us this is, would have been done five years ago.
People, we're too excited about it, it's, it's not something you, you under promise, it's, if we're on the fast track, we're on the fast track.
That's all, I mean, in talking to Richard Helms, um, the county commissioner, he doesn't understand how DOT works, because in the middle of nowhere, out on two hundred and Providence, or Route sixteen and two hundred, they're putting a roundabout in. Well, why are they doing that? Well, apparently, it's, it's one big company that donated all the land, and DOT is putting a roundabout in a very similar intersection that looks the same as we have right here, but there's no traffic out there, but it's getting done, and they're taking their crew and moving, and then he mentioned another one, he goes, I don't know why they're doing, it's not coming through, it's all in Union County, but it's not coming through Union County, it's, it's being directed by the, NCDOT, they're the ones that are the players that are making the decisions, when and where and all that. I was encouraged that they were there, that's why I stopped, and I wasn't sure if they were Union County or state, they did say they were state. If they can do it sooner, all the better, but I, 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 I would, I refuse to promise any dates anymore, based on what we've learned here.
Well, you're doing everyone at the service that can quote twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
I mean, they, they can go on DOT's website, you know, we ponied up the money for it, there's survey crews out there now.
Okay.
And just for the record-
I hope it happens.
The one over here on, um, Tilly Morris? I'm, I'm doing a job over there, and traffic got cut off, just to sort of educate everyone.
It's probably-
Everyone worries about how long it would take once they actually start. The detour sign went up, and within four weeks, the detour sign went down. I was so encouraged to see that. And it's a big traffic circle.
It's nice.
It is nice.
The two lane, two one lane?
It may have taken less than four weeks, but I, it, I think it was around four weeks. So there's, there's encouragement out there, so when you say twenty twenty-two, I just want to make sure people aren't giving that, you know, the wrong information for whatever reason.
All right, well, I hope it, I hope it's sooner, but I'd rather not promise anything and just say it's, it's gonna come, we're, we're already saying it's, this is in the spring, right?
But in the meantime, we're gonna, thank you, Mary, for doing what you can to keep the sheriffs out there.
I'll keep in touch with whatever other options I come across, I'll let you know.
All right. All right, so that's done, any more comments on that, six A? Six B overhead, administration report, log.
Okay, last meeting, we asked the staff to put something together, and we, I think we had something a few years ago, uh, where we're able to have a sign in for everyone who comes in the office. I think this also helps us understand who's coming in, if one citizen's coming in four times a month, and taking her time up, your time up, you know, we should, we should be able to see that and say, well, you know, we need to add more people, you know, or, why, why isn't work getting done, Mary? Because you're, you know, it's ten people coming and seeing you on a certain day, so I think this will help us, so anything less than five minutes, just sign in in the back, put down, you know, if I'm gonna see you, and I'm gonna see Chris on finance, I write down thirty-five minutes on finance, Joe comes in and he signs something, writes down ten minutes, signing documents, and we're done. That way we have a record, Scott Leck comes in three times in one week, you know, we, you know, we, we have a, a record of who's coming in, and then you can come to us and say, I need more people, this is why. You know, it gives us something to be able to, because that was always, my question is, when we did the time studies back a few years ago, was to figure out, you know, do we have the right staff, do we have the right number, and the right skill set, so.
So with that, so we do have a form now? Because when I was here the other day-
It's just very simple.
Form to sign in, there wasn't here one the other day.
No, no, we're just passing it now.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Not to start for next week, I, yeah.
And that's fine, so to make-
I had to come in, and I just sent an email, I hope that was okay.
So to make, to make things easier, where I don't have to come in one more time to sign, in the past, our administrator has signed all the checks. Now they, when we had that interim on law, nobody being here, they asked, there had to be a second signer on it, which Chris is the first, and I am the second.
So was the administrator before?
It was.
Do we need to go back and just change it to that?
She's already done that, she-
Oh.
Oh, she did, that's why I haven't gotten a, a call in the last couple, okay, because every week or so, I come in and I sign a bunch of stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we should save you some time.
So that should save them time, you don't have to-
It, it works out well, because it gives us an opportunity to check it against invoices and so on.
So is there a double check there, I hope?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, we need to make a motion to approve this as a policy?
Policy is fine, I try to, try to kind of gather what you were, you know, from your discussion, and that when we get over, you've been waiting meeting, I just wanted to be sure I put it all out at once, while I was thinking about it.
Regardless of how long they're here, right? Just anyone who pops in? Regardless of how long they're here, right? Just anyone who pops in?
Longer than five minutes.
Okay. Because I come in and they're just asking me to sign, uh, and it's not a big deal. I can sign in, but it's just.
I think I put more than five minutes on there, didn't I?
Yeah, you did. Ron, just when he was verbally conveying, I think he said, you know.
And this made me call the local policy?
No, actually, it was another.
There was another, there was another offender a long time ago.
Not so long ago. Not so long ago.
Actually, no, it.
It was back.
It was way back.
Oh, well, I was talking more recent.
But to them, they always, to Lanning, he always, oh, I just stopped by for a few minutes.
Yeah, they need your office.
And he would have been there two hours.
He was the clerk. And I thought, why would you backtalk me?
You know, Barbie's, doing minutes is tedious and it takes forever, right?
Oh, yeah.
So if someone comes in and interrupts you while you're in the middle of it, you can't get done. And your land use plan, I can't imagine trying to concentrate on something like that.
I don't know about it.
So we need a motion to approve that then?
So I make a motion to approve, uh, policy number P two seventeen oh nine oh one, uh, final visitor's sign in policy?
Further discussion. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, six.
Do you have a copy?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Discussion consideration, two thousand seventeen land use plan, Village Center District. I'm going to put out an hour.
Well, before we do that, can I ask you, Mary?
Sure.
Did planning board, I mean, I don't want to stop you guys if you want to talk about it, but did they have a lot of comments?
Um, oh.
I guess where I'm headed with that is.
How many revisions are you going to see?
Give them some examples, because I thought their examples were pretty, pretty good. They weren't.
Can we maybe just talk about their examples? Because if we go through.
He's right. Just go through what they changed.
The deltas, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, because some of the, I thought some of the things that they were discussing were really right on that, you know, we needed to look at and clarify it. Because remember, the whole purpose is somebody can read this and I think they've talked about, if a citizen looks at this, instead of just from a planning language, sort of trying to clean some of that up. I'll take a personal.
Gosh, I always be kept with that. So I have to think about, I figure everything.
Well, you don't have to go through each other because we each have a copy. Did everyone bring their copies?
Well, yeah, you, we have our copies. But you have your, you have.
I have what we did work on last night.
Yes, you know what I mean? So you can just go over that.
I'll pull that up. I'll pull it through it.
You just, you just tell us, you don't have to get into all the why's and why not as long as.
Yeah.
Well, here's the good thing.
And if we don't agree, we'll say, yeah, you got it wrong.
I have to throw it up there with my chawron. That's how I mark everything that we change.
I mean, are you guys okay with that?
No, I think that's a good way. Because you go reading, they, they read everything.
They do the same.
Plus, there's a lot of stuff they just read and said, well, I'm fine with that. And they didn't even touch. So I'd say it touched maybe about ten to fifteen percent.
Okay. So I'm just going to go through what they've marked, right?
There you go.
Okay. So, uh, well, do you want a quick orientation of all the sections?
Remember you filmed it?
Did I do that?
In back in the, at the retreat back in February?
Oh, I did.
Yes. We were away.
This is not a new document.
This is not, no, no. It's a little bit.
Okay.
We were afraid to say how many pages.
When, when was the last time, when was revised?
Oh, four?
Ever.
Was it four?
Two thousand and four, the original plan is the same one.
And, and I know when I got on the six, that was the first time we talked about rego again.
We made an attempt in two thousand thirteen.
We've been talking about it for literally.
Right, right.
Eight.
And we thought we had it. We gave you the contract and then things happened, so.
Okay. So the first, so you know that this land use plan starts off with an executive summary. I just want to highlight that because people were thinking that there were repeat sections. The whole idea is the first section is executive. So you could literally pull out those eight pages, um, you know, someone could go through those eight pages and more or less get the Reader's Digest version of the rest of the plan. So, um.
And that's important because you had three VPs from banks who look at things strategically.
Yes.
And I think that came out real clear of the executive piece, because no one wants to read fifty pages. Give me eight pages. You have an appendix. If, you know, Brian doesn't know what this looks like, if it's an appendix, he can do more research for himself to understand that.
Yeah, that's the whole point. I mean, even in terms of having it available out here, for example, if someone wants to come by and just pick up the executive summary of the land use plan, they can get that.
Right, 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 yeah.
So, um, so don't count that in your length when you're considering how long it is.
She's going to now deduct your.
Just for the record, you know, I'm the guy that likes everything.
Small.
Smaller, paraphrased.
Yeah.
You know, give me bullet points. I really like this land use plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's great.
I mean, the pictures, I read it like, I approached it like I was a resident, not a council member at first. As I'm looking through it, I'm going, yeah, this is where I decided to live. This is where I decided to raise my pitch.
Yeah, that's.
That's good. Then it, then it worked.
Yeah, that's important to me. Um, so the, the first thing they mentioned, and I'm going to speed through these. If you want me to slow down, let me know. Uh, what the planning board has talked about, um, they realized that a good portion of this plan was based on the data as well as, um, public input. They wanted to be sure that I mentioned the LUP survey date. I have no idea how I missed that, but I did. Um, while I'm here, you'll see that they also changed this from methodology in another section to approach. Um, they have amended this section here on scope.
I think they showed it.
Almost. They liked, they liked the bullet points here.
Yeah, yeah.
So they wanted to have that be the focus.
Yeah.
Um, and.
As we're going through this, do you want us to comment on whether we liked their?
Sure, that would be great.
I think that's it. If, if there's something you, you want to add back in that they took out, you know, that's up to us because we're, we're final.
So keep us all on task with headings or page numbers. And then if anyone, if anyone says stop, I'm going to say to Joe.
So give us.
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm just, I, I'd like to see you make notes as we go along too. So if we know a page.
So I'm on page twelve right now. Sorry, my phone actually.
That's, that's just my annoying, annoying lights.
And the pages might be a bit off sometimes because I'm adding things in, but.
Then you can go to scope like two, two. And that's another way of looking at it. Yeah, yeah. That's another way of following it.
Okay. So, um, they found that the executive summary around the scope wasn't as concise as they would have liked it to be. And they found that these bullet points was what they would like to see scope focused on. So.
And in the first paragraphs, if I remember correctly, was talking about why we made these changes. And they didn't really care. They're saying, yeah, they, you know, it's like, you're, you're wasting space by saying why, why we're doing this. And that's why they deleted all those.
Because that's partially because you have such an history with the town. You've been here twelve plus years.
Yeah. And some of them just get involved, you know, not, not as much. We're looking at it as a citizen, but we're hopefully a builder.
Well, and that, and it is the hard part. Scope is a hard thing to put, wrap my head around. But you know, after this long, what, I looked at it as the disparity between what we have in, in our two thousand and four land use plan.
Okay.
And what we needed. And sort of that defined scope for me. But, um, yeah. So they like the bullet points. We're going to try to revolve around that. The survey date again under two point three methodology. Um, what else? I'm going to see the next one.
This is, I'll, I'll go quick on two, three methodology. They'll reference L A R T P. That's the current acronym for that body. Has it changed?
Sorry, Brian, what was that?
Where you've got L A R T P.
That's an old one.
That's the old one, I think.
Yeah, L A R T P, that was back in two thousand and eight or nine.
Right.
So do we want to reference?
Yeah.
That's the only one I know that we've approved. Have we approved any ones since then?
We haven't. No.
And that's the.
Yeah.
So do you want to add?
We can take it out, um, if you want.
I'm just saying that if we're referring to something, it'd be better to refer to, like, it's okay to say this, but then put a reference now Mumpo. So if somebody wants to go do additional diligence for.
Do you mean local area, regional transportation plan? That's the acronym.
Is that, is that the new one?
That's the one. That's, that's the only one that's out there. It's still out there.
I thought it was like Mumpo or something. It just changed.
That's organization.
So what do we call?
CRTP.
I'll still.
The one that we have adopted in this western part, right with the Western Coalition, that was the L A R T P, the Local Area Regional Transportation Plan.
Okay. So I'm getting it confused with probably these other bodies that were kind of supplemental, but don't really replace us. Okay.
Right, yeah.
Is, is there not the village, the village plan? Could we now have our own roads? So.
It was on the list at some point.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
We, we're doing our own roads. We've taken over roads in Pennerfield. So maybe it should be.
So just, and that point, you're, you're going to see as we go through the goals and objectives and policies.
Yeah.
Under roads, one of them is to create a street and road plan.
Okay.
And to also update the L A R T P if we can.
So is that where we can allude towards to our, our takeover?
Roads that we're taking over.
Our area, or our involvement with that.
Okay, so you have a color later.
I created that specifically than that. Yeah. But we'll get to that in a, in a few minutes. Um, okay. So methodology, that's fine. Okay. Now we're moving into the core land use policies and goals. And they went through this in greater detail, which I was grateful for. So I'm going to give you a quick orientation based on public feedback. Oh, sorry. Uh, page thirty-ish. You'll see all these little symbols here. Okay. So I'm going to quick orientation here on five point O vision statement, core policies and goals. This really is the, the meat of the plan. Um, and if you look, it starts first with a vision statement. Uh, sorry, I'm going to back up. Sorry. I'm going to take you to four for a second because I feel this is important as well. So you know why and where we came from. If we go to four point O on page twenty-one, this is the section dedicated to, um, the public priorities and community vision, which is backed by the statistics and the survey. And so by quickly flipping through this, um, you get a good idea of where our community visions come from, where the goals and objectives come from. I won't go into this in detail, but I want you to know that that's where it kind of starts. As well as the public input meetings, I think Robin held one. Um, we've had various other surveys besides this. So there's a place survey, the traffic survey, all of those factored in.
Robin told me she liked this.
Oh, yeah?
Like, did she tell you?
I don't think we had got a chance to speak. Okay. So I'm going to go now to, back to five point O. So when you get to five point O, we now are creating the plan as opposed to the lead-up. So the five point two is our vision statement. More or less, this is the same vision statement we've had before because things have not really changed that much in terms of what the village is aspire to. If you look at statistics, this has just been cleaned up a little bit. I'm not going to read it. I'm just going to point out that it's there, uh, for expediency. Then from, there are, how many goals? What we got? Eight, nine, I think there. And those are the main goals, the priorities, the core land use policies. So those are like the umbrella policies. I'm going to skip them because I'm assuming you guys have had a chance to read through them.
Yeah, and some of this we talked about at our retreat.
Right. So the, now to the planning board, um, what they liked and what they wanted changed. So I'm now looking at, um, A one one hundred under, um, maintaining current land use patterns. They wanted to see, see if I can remember why.
They wanted to see a regular something on their schedule. So they look at it once a year.
Thank you. You're right. That's what it was.
Saying, I was awake the whole.
Look at that. Yes. They wanted to be sure, rather than just saying, oh, it's going to be updated every five years.
Or in this case, two thousand and four to now, that's ridiculous, right? So.
And I had mentioned to them that in most municipality, well, not, wouldn't say most, ideally, a municipality or planning board looks at their land use plan at least every year, just reviewing it, not looking at changing it, but just to ask themselves whether it's still current, what needs to be changed, do they need a new survey, and so on and so forth.
If an annexation took place or something like that, then maybe you do have more fifty-five plus, you know, than you had last year. You didn't have that, so.
And then just backing, you know, this is a very small section, just making sure that you keep your codes and so on accurate. Um, all right. Now a little more meat, promote Marvin's identity and cultivate a sense of place. I always preface by saying, this is the touchy feely section. Um, it's very, it's an intangible goal, but it is definitely a land use plan goal. Um.
Did some of this come from comments in the survey?
To some extent, yes. But more, there's a survey that we, that actually, um, what's her name? Caitlin O'Mensy did.
Oh, yeah.
And she did a sense of place survey. And that's where a lot of the goals came from for this particular section. And actually, she, her, her own study referred me to a lot of books that I read that kind of helped me understand, you know, what this means. So I know it's not, if you're not, if you haven't read some of that stuff, it just seems kind of feeling. But it's the whole idea of emotionally connecting to, you know, landmarks and, and places in your space. So, um, what did they have? They wanted me to define, so the first one, it was just repetition. So I took out bullet three, um, or sorry, amended it. Can you see that?
Yeah, I can strike.
Okay. Yeah, I struck that. They felt because the first one, citizens feel landmarks to which citizens feel a connection. They wanted me to define subarea plan. Uh, some of the landlord members didn't know what that is, uh, or was. Um, so I'm going to have to define that. Do you all know what that is, a subarea plan? Do you want me to help you out with that?
That can be the downtown area.
Uh, it could be. Yeah.
It could be a plot of land across the street and how you want that to look in the future. And you can make that a subplan if you want.
Right. So this is the example I often pull out. Um, this is the Dunn Woody, um, master plan. It's a, it's a subarea plan. And you can see they just took out the Village Center District and it's almost like its own little land use plan out to itself. Um, so that's what a subarea plan is. Knowing that people have been talking about the master plan for the Village Center District, this is what this land use plan is directing. It's saying, create a subarea plan. Um, so consider or develop a subarea plan that promotes shared values and reflects unique history and character. Um, they also thought that perhaps we should review certain goals that were really ambitious, um, because you wouldn't want someone to say, well, hey, you didn't do this or you didn't do that. So I'm going to scrub it for, for that, for that perspective. Um, this is interesting. So they had trouble with some of the subjective terms like aesthetically pleasing and high quality. By the way, high quality is, is defined in here. Um, aesthetically pleasing, my direction to them was, this tells you what your goal is. The, um, photographs and pictures and that subarea plan tells you what, in your character areas, tell you what aesthetically pleasing is. So you're not going to find that definition, right. So you're not going to find that definition here in your goals and objectives, but by flipping to your character areas, you're going to get a sense of what we feel is aesthetically pleasing. So, um, still, I, I told them that, not that I, that shouldn't be a strike. That was just supposed to be a, I shouldn't have struck in that. I just told them I would look for those terms and we would double check to make sure that we defined them adequately later. Um, what else did they mark? Oh, we had a long discussion about this, and I think the council will have to have a discussion as well, because this has changed so many times. This, so this is the residential, um, section. Sorry, I'm opening things I shouldn't be here. So the primary goal here is to preserve attractive, low-density, family-oriented neighborhoods. That said, um, there's also the discussion yet again of higher density homes to some extent, whether they're age-restricted homes and or townhomes. Comes up, comes down. So you'll see I've marked that with a three asterix.
Wasn't this where it was like sixty-nine percent, everybody's happy with one per acre?
Yes.
And it was another thirty percent of fifty-five plus, maybe a townhome. But, you know, from our standpoint, now we overlay traffic piece.
Right.
Anytime I build a townhome, I got more cars on the roads than I did if I built it one per acre.[1746.42]
Right, and so.
And do we need it, can we still go to these other places for our retail? You know, Wester Chapel, Waxall, Charlotte, where do we need to build it ourselves? Since we just built a new one up the street, how much more do we really need? That's a question we need to ask as a group.
Well, there's a huge misconception out there that commercial somehow brings in dollars to the town itself.
No, it doesn't.
And it's a huge misconception. They think, people think there's just this landslide of tax dollars that come in.
Yeah.
There's not.
We do Wester Chapel, because they're talking, they had the target and all that. They had to get a police officer to do it for the target, or throw the bribe and all the stuff they have in that little shop.
We did the math before, I think we were at a negative twenty-nine thousand.
Right.
It's allowed certain things. And my only point is, whether it's a private person trying to make money, or people think the town somehow is gonna make money out of adding commercial, when really our priority is traffic, they really need to know how those numbers look, and they don't look very good.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Indian Trail is a prime example, you know, they really induced a lot of, just say, if you got it, bring it, will that prove it, build it? They're dealing with the ramifications of that, because the dollars aren't there to really support, and retrofit, and rethink a lot of that. And that seventy-four corridor, yeah.
Yeah, our model with single-family homes allows us to do roads, extra police officers, parks. You know, it's been working for nine years now without raising taxes. So we do have a good model that people seem to want. You know, they don't want a whole lot of services more, because they did, they go to Waxall, they go to Charlotte. They still want the single homes, they want us to hop out on the traffic. And the hard part, we gotta say, is I can't stop the traffic. There's three thousand ferments at Waxall coming up, probably the roads, that's coming, you know, it's coming down the road. So I can't look E and I and say, we're gonna stop it, but we could help. That's what we gotta do.
We can help them, we can keep other people from hurting them.
So, I mean, if this helps, we had done the analysis with the last development, which was, I think, at first, three hundred thousand square feet they proposed. We had calculated that we would bring in, just from the municipality, would be between twelve thousand and nineteen thousand dollars in taxes, just from three hundred thousand square feet. And then remember that an officer itself was going to cost us eighty-five thousand dollars. So you're already in the hole, right, before you had even taken the development off. So that is a little different from this discussion, but related in that its density. I, you know, it's difficult, because when the survey was done at the time, we had no age-restricted homes. We now have approved three of them. And even at that time, only nineteen percent of the population had expressed an interest in it.
Right.
So if you ask me, I feel like we fulfilled, you know, with that nineteen percent, you know, interest in it. But still, the planning board thought that it should be considered. They did like the idea that it continued perhaps still in the periphery, and not so much in the Village Center District.
Whoever, when you did the survey, it was, I think seventy-five percent was still not built out. Now it's ninety-two built out.
Right.
So you have a lot less that you can build out. So you can save the next eight percent, it'll be all fifty-five plus.
Is it time for another survey?
I don't know, according to what they're saying, it'll be five to ten years. I don't know if we need another one right now.
And I wouldn't say you should not do one. I feel like we got, we did so much work on that last one, and every time we do something more, the land use plan just gets pushed off and pushed off. I'd rather have you cement it somewhere and then do your survey and update it, and at least you've got something on the books to work from, right?
Again, we're not saying that not look at the survey, I think we should. And I don't know what it is, you get back and do some research on that and tell us, is it every five to ten years? I thought that's what I meant.
Well, we had eight percent potential build out left, and that's potential. You've got some people that are going, I'm not looking to subdivide, but I live on.
Right.
But do you, do you really need to resurvey people to find out that they don't want high-density on the eight percent remaining? Now, the ones that'll answer yes are the ones that want to put it in.
Right, right. Where they want to downsize to a townhome.
Yeah, if someone, if someone in Marvin wants to downsize but not leave Marvin, they have three opportunities, right? And we took, we're no longer doing C V Ps.
I C Ds.
I C Ds. So I'm not saying you have to take it off here, but I certainly don't think we have to resurvey people over a paragraph in the land use.
In the land use plan.
Land use plan.
And if it puts it in perspective, you know, that they found looking at these again helpful, planning word, this graph talks to you, talks about what people were willing to negotiate for higher density. And you'll see that the greatest answers are seventy-two percent not in favor of negotiating anything for density. Others, you know, to some extent, parks, open spaces, community amenities, dwelling type that they happen to like, and it was not very popular. And then here are the statistics. And I did pull up the actual question. The actual question was, besides what we currently allow in Marvin, and there were pictures of all the types, which other home type or dwelling type would you be in favor of? And estate homes, about fifty-eight percent, I guess larger than what we all already allow, right? Like the current rural subdivision. Townhomes is eight, duplexes is three, age-restricted is nineteen, that's the highest. However, I should note that none of the above is also nineteen. So when you consider that there's that interest, feels like the people are sort of telling us how they feel about a lot of high-density. So from that standpoint.
Which is not a surprise to any of us.
No, no, it's not really. Now, that said, I think new surveying in the next few years might not be a bad thing. But you're, I think, as a group, you definitely wanna come back to this. And if you don't want this, then it shouldn't be in your land use plan, or maybe you wanna redefine it.
Or remind me what planning board said, they said leave it in?
They said leave it in, but they really felt like it was going to be up to you all to decide.
They were real specific, or like we have, it's over in Marvin Gardens, which is the end of the town, right? And it's a buffer between homes and commercial. So that's what they like.
So they liked the way this was reworded, and this was reworded for them, I should say. So, and I know it's long, but I had to try to accommodate everything they said. So consider small pockets of high-quality, age-restricted dwelling units or townhomes, because it didn't quite specify, where the development would serve as a buffer between uses of different intensity on the periphery of the municipal boundary.
I would question the townhomes, because you give me townhomes, now I got more kids in the schools, and more kids on the roads driving, so I would just get rid of the townhomes. That's my opinion, but you guys can talk about it.
You know, I'm someone that could have profited from a higher-density years ago when I subdivided that piece of property, and I didn't want.
Yeah.
Even though I could have made more money doing it, I say no townhomes.
Girls, what?
Well, I mean, here it's kind of saying the age-restricted dwelling units, it's kind of referring to them. But I wouldn't, I mean, townhomes, not at this point in time.
Okay.
So are you saying, Brian, that calling it age-restricted units kind of suggests?
Well, it says age-restricted dwelling units or townhomes. I think they were trying to say it's like a townhome, because it has, you know, zero lot line or no yard to speak of.
I should know, I think, no, I put them both in there because it was unclear to me, which they were okay with. So I put the townhomes in parentheses, hoping you all would clarify. So that's the definition.
I think it is good, it is a buffer transition from like a commercial or mixed use, and then you go before you go into a higher-end residential.
So what do we call normal homes, are we just calling homes in the plan?
Yeah, single-family dwelling units.
So do we just change that to age-restricted, single-family dwelling units?
Sure, we can do that, yeah.
That's, I don't know if that was a question, but you guys, Joe?
Yeah, I think age-restricted, I mean, we're already, but we're done doing them, right?
Well, that's what we're saying. You might look at another one.
There may be another one if it makes sense.
Are the, are the conditions in that policy the conditions under which you would consider them? Because remember, Chief Staff looks at this and wants to know what they should, you know, and what they are not.
Because if we don't want it, if we don't want it in Broadmore, which it was there, you should kill it before it gets lost, that way we don't have to waste our time.
Exactly, so that's why this is important.
I'm not sure that's practical right there.
Which one? Locate, this one here?
Yeah, well, locate developments near health and other services.
Well, that's a good point. So do you have a C V S near you?
The C V S, yeah.
Now, see, the allusion to that is that you want it on the periphery where commercial is.
Where it could be a hospital or a daycare.
Right, and I guess that.
Do we still have it on the outskirts?
Well, up here, it still says on the periphery of the municipal boundary, and that's why I'm asking.
I think this would confuse somebody later, that they somehow had to put it on that side of the town closer to the hospital.
Hospital, okay.
Which, you know, an ambulance ride is thirty seconds longer from here than it is over there.
And I do what I do with the planning board. If someone says they're not in favor of something, I look for unanimous consent. If you disagree, say so.
And I'm not married to it, I just.
And I'll take it out, otherwise it's a problem.
I can go with thinking of that.
Yeah.
So?
Taking out the developments near health?
Yes.
That's stipulation, so to Robert's point, they might think they have to only put it on one side of the municipal boundary.
If it makes it worse, let's say someone wants to do this later, and this comment makes it a little more restrictive, I'm okay with leaving it. You know what I mean? If we wanna duplicate the need to put it on the outskirts, I'm okay with leaving it. I just thought it was hard to police.
Give me an example, where does this fit in in our current town? That's what I'll ask.
Let me suggest this, sorry, in Portland.
Right next to you?
Maybe the word is definitive, promote development near health, and change the word to promote versus or encourage versus locate.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Is that one of the uses, is it?
Marvin Gardens?
No, it's not. Remember, you have Marvin Gardens here, fifty-five plus, and you also have, what's it called?
Amber Meadow?
No, the other one.
Courtyards of Marvin.
Courtyards of Marvin.
And Amber Meadow.
And that's closer to, that's closer to the hospital.
And Amber Meadow's right here, right?
Yeah.
Right on the periphery. So that's, I would.
Maybe encourage.
Do they encourage?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Um, let's see, the amenities, I know you, you brought that up a few times. The amenities or lack thereof.
I feel like at the very least, if we're going to do an age-restricted development, you want it to fit the, like, it should be a lifestyle center, right? Where they have all the amenities, the guest, parking, all that stuff.
So now I'm saying you, you're not doing twenty-five homes, because you can't afford to do all the amenities.
Well, I do agree with the sentiment that.
I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying that's what you're going for.
That the commercial center is an amenity, I do agree with that to some extent, right? The fact that they're there, publics, and they can walk to it.
Right.
That concept's, but if it's like Epcun, Courtyards of Marvin, and, and they're sort of isolated onto themselves, it feels like they should, and they're paying the condo fees they are, it should service that demographic. That's just my opinion.
I think there should be something, not just, yeah, not just.
But it's a deal.
Not just give them more density and nothing for the people who are renting or buying it.
I'm okay with it, I think it kind of falls on them if they want to sell their units to have amenities.
What kind of amenities are we talking?
Clubhouses.
Football, maybe?
Yeah.
Tennis, walking trail.
But I would trade green space for maybe clubhouse.
Pickle.
Oh.
Pickle.
Pickle.
That just takes up, yeah, that just takes up a whole, you know, a lot of land, and it's probably not cost-effective to, to put those sort of things in if you're only putting in.
Bless you.
Just a guess.
I look at it as a, like, as a demographic you're trying to service, like, why else have age-restricted? Maybe it's a sociologist to me, but you're trying to create pockets for parts of your demographic. And I feel like those people want everything taken care of, they want everything closed. But that's my bias, there's no doubt about that.
Well, do you remember the Broadmore piece? It just had like eighty homes, Joe, didn't it have eighty homes of fifty-five plus?
Back in the day, yeah.
But there was no amenities, so they just popped in eighty homes to get their, and we approved, what, sixty-eight homes instead of a hundred ninety homes? But that's what I don't want. I don't want somebody just to pop it in on a, just to get density for them, and not giving the services to the people that buy it.
So leave that in.
Yeah, yeah.
You solve it, just leave it in.
Okay.
And I don't know if I should mention this, because I don't mean to talk in one direction or the other, but I did find it interesting, like, my mother actually just moved into a similar-type community, gated community, really very cute, but it's Canada, but it did make it to the Supreme Court a challenge.
Right.
And they did find that it was not constitutional. And so they can no longer restrict those homes or ages by any stretch. And so it's going to be a huge shift in there, if you're now letting children in and going to school.
Wow, that is.
Yeah, and that kind of, I wasn't as afraid of that before, because I know here they have that, that rule, that eighty percent, and I didn't know if that was something that had been challenged, and that was the rendering. But when I heard that, I thought, oh, yeah, that's a big deal. So something to think about. So I'm gonna leave it as is with those changes for now.
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Okay, this where, we're at support attractive pedestrian-oriented neighborhood scale development. The planning board wanted to know what the difference was between this and the Village Center District. This type of development is focused on, again, larger mall-like development on the peripheral area of the village, where the Village Center District speaks first off, it's more Village Center. So with that established, they put bullet three under one hundred, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you what page, page thirty-four. They wanted me to add, in keeping with Marvin's rule of character, as instead of adjacent surrounding land uses, the reason for that, they felt like, well, what if we happened, and it's, and it's a good point, what if we're talking about a parcel that happens to be, you know, surrounded by something in Union County, right?
They do a lot.
So that was their point there. I have to fix the numbering, I messed up the numbering there. They changed under D one eight hundred, they changed the word to encourage developments. It once said, you probably have it in front of you, it once said require, I think.
I'm going to encourage.
Okay.
And the reason was why they want office and retail, because sometimes they go in different directions. Markets is retail going down, maybe office can save it.
And the reason it had require was because actually the code that governs C C C Ds actually, right now, requires that you have a certain percentage of office, a certain percentage of retail. So I felt like it should say require, because that's what the code says. But, you know, in conditional use, so that's why we put encourage. What else did they change? Oops. Again, they wanted to, definition for sub-area plan. Not sure why, but I think they felt these two things, these two points under E, sorry, page, page thirty-six, E one one hundred, that perhaps the bullet three and four was redundant. I think I can reword it, I wanted some way to bring in the churches. I'm sorry, I'm realizing I'm in a different section. We're now under facility to uniquely identifiable Village Center that promotes Marvin's heritage. And so under E one hundred, bullet two and three, I have to work on those, combine them somehow. Number five, create overlay standards that bisect through lands. They didn't understand what that meant, but I did assure them that it's important. And maybe I need to find a different way to say it. But just so that you know, we have the overlay district
Right.
that does not encompass parcels of land, right? We want it to encompass an area, which is why it's, it would be an overlay.
So it can only be a hundred foot back from the road?
Right.
Instead of the whole property?
Yeah, and more or less this came about, and it might change a little now, but more or less this comes around when you think of, I still call it the cash property, but it's not anymore, three-acre ponds, which is huge. You don't, you wouldn't necessarily want your Village Center District to encompass the parcel and follow the boundary of the parcel.
Way back down the hill, right.
Right, you would want it to bisect that property at a property, you know, the parcel, at a dimension that's comfortable for the village.
Right, right.
So this allows that, or this is encouraging.
And just so everyone understands, you wouldn't be going to Casey and saying, we're gonna go a hundred and fifty feet back. When he goes to sell it, then it becomes it. So it's not gonna be, we're gonna be going a hundred and fifty feet back on both sides.
Right.
Is that they go to sell it, then it becomes part of the town.
And it's just an opportunity.
Yeah.
They don't have to.
Well, do they?
It's up to you.
I don't know, that's what we gotta discuss, yeah, yeah.
Well, and that comes down to the actual regulations, the actual district.
Right, right.
Which we haven't gotten to yet, because until I have guidance here, I have it drafted, but there's no point in putting that forward until we, I have, you know, there's.
See, to me, that's sort of anti-property rights. To me, if you own the parcel and we come in and say, we're doing an overlay, if you live there fifty more years and you don't wanna move your driveway.
I'm fine, but when you go to sell.
While you live there, it wouldn't change.
But isn't that a taking of the land, and you go to sell it?
Well, no, I'm making money for you. You're, now it's commercial, instead of being sixty thousand an acre, it's two hundred thousand an acre. So, you know, we're not hurting you.
So when you go to sell it, you have to change over. I think we need to think about that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't want to confuse you, that doesn't say what you're. Yeah, and, and, I don't want to confuse you. That doesn't say what you're saying.
Okay.
Um, that's different. That's in the regulation, whether it's a conditional district, whether it's a, a buy rate, this is a district. That goes into that property rights issue. This is just saying that when we define the subarea plan or the master plan or the district, we don't necessarily want to follow the outlines of the parcels. We want.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's all this is saying. Just, I don't want to scare you into thinking this is regulating any of that.
So let's call it a different topic, but as you, as you think about that topic, and I, I sort of have a preconceived idea of what I expect or what I consider fair property rights, but Casey's property, for instance, I bought it. And he knew that this whole area was.
Being looked at.
Being looked at as overlay, but he wants to put houses back there. To me, that's his right.
I agree.
But this provides an opportunity to do an overlay if you want to join in. I don't know that we can tell somebody.
No, I don't think, I don't think we can. But, but when he goes to sell it, then I think it reverts back to.
It's rezoned.
How much you got?
No, so let me, so let me explain how that, that works.
Okay.
So if you put an overlay district over, hopefully he doesn't mind us using his name, but it's probably a good example. Um, Casey's property.
Right.
And you're now, the way it is configured now is it's just in that one strip. So there's two ways to do that. Let's assume you're just doing a straight overlay district. Once he, it's not even once he sells, to your point, if he wants to all of a sudden subdivide and convert that front portion to the overlay standards, he can apply the zoning. Right. He can come and rezone to that, or he can, you know, subdivide it and sell it. Once he sells it, that zoning district applies, right? It's now commercial. But the commercial standard, at least this is when the regulations come in, won't make him build commercial, right? He still has a right to keep, to, you still have a right to build residential, especially in a mixed-use district.
That's important to me.
Okay.
As someone who believes somebody, somebody that owns a piece of property should be able to do it within reason, within ordinance, within land use plan, should be able to do what they want with it. If Casey wants to split it off and it's worth money to him, great. If he doesn't, because he's got plenty of money, that's his choice. That's none of our business, in my opinion. If all of a sudden his, his mom needs a new house and it's, and residential's still allowed, it's not on us to tell him that it needs to be an ice cream shop.
Right. Oh, no, no, I don't think we can afford that.
Right, and that's why you use an overlay, because the overlay says that the under, the underlying zoning is still there, right? But this other zoning district, if they so choose to kind of, well, they sell or they buy, you know, they, they sell their property and they're developing, they're developing, it's, it's zoned and it's permissible, it's permitted.
That's what I thought and that's what I expected, but is that?
No, I'm, I'm just trying, I'm being delabored here. I'm, I'm pretty strong on property rights too. We're not gonna tell you, gotta build a lashing place in your, on your property. That's all right.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, cool.
And especially here. So as you go through the Village Center, you'll see that it's almost, you almost could call it mixed use in that sense, because homes and residential are in the year forever.
Have we, have we got our, our hour check?
Uh, we've got about fifteen minutes.
Wow, we're doing good.
Oh, that's so bad, because I think we almost hit the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, so we can go a little bit faster.
We can add in early if you want.
That's the option.
Is there just a few more?
Yeah, just coming on. They wanted me to work on this provision for parking. This got a lot of attention. Generally, when you're creating a pedestrian oriented area, you want the parking to be at minimum us behind the facade line or to the rear of buildings. I have a visual, I'm just not sure if I want to take up time to show you that. But if you imagine that you've got all this walkway in the front and you've got a building, the last, if you, and you put parking in the front, you've now impeded the pedestrian's connection to that use or that place. And that's not what you want to do when something is pedestrian oriented. Unless you're flipping the buildings and you're making, which is also in the pod manual here, you're creating enclosure, sense of enclosure, and you're kind of putting together groupings of buildings. That's when things change a little, to Paul's point, Paul Capiolo. So I have to work on a way of, unless it, it's something essentially that says that when a developer is proposing a creative solution for, you know, site planning or whatever, that perhaps the parking would be allowed.
So if they wanted to do a pocket park like we have over here in the corner, Ray and Audrey, you know, they could bring that to us.
Right, yeah. But if it's just your old typical, you know, lined up building, then it should be fine.
Yeah.
Um, what else? Oh, that's it. We didn't, we didn't do pedestrian railways. So that was it.
So is there anything you need for us for next week? Cause we, we'll come right back to this next week.
I would like you to, if you've gotten through, continue reading through whatever you haven't read through.
So that's all the planning board got through, that's right?
This is, this is, yes, they, now, some of them have gotten farther, but in terms of everyone comparing notes, this is where they are at. So we have another special meeting.
So if we, if we go through and we get another hour into this, then don't let them go, let them go behind us, so they're, you know what I mean? So we're jumping over each other instead of both doing the same thing. Cause if we approve it, you know, I think we're gonna go with what we think.
Tell me again, because I'm not sure if I understood your instruction.
So if, if we look at this and we make changes on it.
Yes.
I don't want the planning board to look at it too, because we're probably, if we, we agreed with it, it's probably what's gonna go. I'd like them to go to the next section.
Oh, that's, and that's sort of what I did with them last night. Well, I think, tell me if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly. What I said to them when it was real, when they realized they weren't gonna finish the next section.
Right, right.
I said, well, if we can get the council to about this place, then they're gonna go forward in two weeks.
Right.
And do the next, the rest of it.
Right.
And then you're going to follow up on top.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's it. So we're not overlapping each other.
Right, I asked, but I didn't want them to stop there. I wanted them to keep going.
No, you're saying, Ron, so if we're doing, this, this isn't gonna.
Let's say we're doing this section.
If we're doing four through seven.
Yeah.
They shouldn't even bother looking at four through seven. They should go to seven through ten.
Yes, right, yes, yes, that way we're, yeah.
I think so. Did you do that tonight? Like, are you, you're okay with everything you?
Yeah, I'm following what they have now.
Okay, oh, okay.
We're gonna talk about.
All right, well, that makes it simpler.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand, I think that makes sense.
Joe, were you doing?
Yeah, yeah, the only thing I, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around is I got lambasted because I would, you've been said that I've, or that you're being accused of wanting all this commercial, which I, I'm still on the record of never wanting any big box store commercial. But now we're talking about overlays and what commercial potential could be. So I'm, I'm trying, there's like a disconnect there, like I, if I.
I think it gets into the details further in.
It's the size, Joe.
No, I agree, I agree. It's just the size and how much you allow, right?
That's further in the.
In the land use plan, okay. Cause I just thought I was.
But I understand what you're saying. This came up even yesterday in terms of, okay, well, what does all that mean, right? And so this is where the character areas are, right? The commercial corridor area is like our current CCCD. And then, you know, the character area for the Village Center District, which is here, is close, I think I skipped some of the photographs. Um, oh, that's it. Is here, and this actually has a whole supplemental section just for it, per the contract, that you all wanted. And so number one.
Is that Lanning?
This is it, right there.
Could be him.
In spirit. So here is more concrete terms of what it means, what the commercial in the historic district means compared to the commercial in the commercial corridor area, right?
Marvin Gardens would be the first one, yes, yeah, yeah.
As opposed to in the Village Center District, which I think I skipped again, I'm sorry. You know, look at the, the maximum floor ratio here is drastically reduced, right? Two point zero seven to one point oh.
So you're, you're trying to define what we've always talked about, and that is a sort of a niche. This small niche, historical.
Right.
And you're gonna see that more here. Uh, I encourage you all, and as I did with the planning board, to look at, this is the Village Center District. These are tiers of development. The first tier being the roadway. The second tier being the use, the uses. The third and fourth tier are both greenways and parks. Um, but four is more passive, where gray is a little more active. So I'll give you a quick orientation on that before, and then we can close this down. This is tier one, talking about the rights away, the sidewalks, sidewalks and the streetscapes. And then you start to see pictures of what, um, what street design could or should look like in this area. And I tried to pull out examples of main, main street or avenue type roads. And you can see that, you know, the gravel, their, this is important. It's gonna be important to be sure, as Paul Capiolo noted, if there's something in here you don't like at all, and you don't want to see people consider, then it should come up.
Right, cause they're gonna come and say, you have your book, I want this.
As soon as you said that, this may not be what I'm trying to express right now, but downtown Matthews.
Yes.
I don't think we're looking for downtown Matthews or.
No.
And so I'm glad you brought that up, so I will quickly hit this, because I think it's important. In everything that I have ever, and I've done a lot of reading and researching, like, there is an appendix where you can find all the reference material. The number, the first thing that you look at is what they call is the street form. Before you start developing a Village Center District is the street form. I'm getting there. So you're gonna see that, sorry, come on, there it is. So in it, having read a number of different street manuals in the area, the one that actually seemed the easiest to read was the Charlotte. Uh, they have a street design manual, and it's.
It happens for many different areas though, right? They have like books and.
They're like seven or eight different types. The two that I think that the village is trying to accomplish are likely here. But my, I really truly believe from everything I've read and knowing our conditions, that this avenue type street is probably what's going to accommodate the traffic on this road. And the biggest difference here is, to your point, Robert, is you'll notice that there's a green strip here. And on a main street type street, there is no green strip. You'll have planters and you'll have trees, but you don't actually have the green strip. And it's little things like that.
Kind of like downtown Wexwell.
Yeah, yeah, a little more like that. So to quick, this brings you through a few different design concepts. You can see here the difference between not creating a sense of place and kind of creating sense of enclosure with your buildings. Types of things we're looking for, massing, texture, that kind of thing.
Probably four-story buildings probably isn't a picture I wanna say.
Well, and here's a little study of the architecture and the, the current architecture in the Village Center. And telling you what it is. It helps us figure out what kind of architecture we might be looking for. And then after that study is completed, you begin to move through the different tiers I was telling you about with pictures. And you can all look and see what you like and what you don't like. This is neocolonial, what we already find here in the Village Center. It has some mixture of Victorian, but the ones I think started to exemplify what we already have in the Village Center is in here. So this is the build, the type of building styles we're looking at. Uh, that, that's Lanning's trace right there. That's the one he brought me to, and Charlotte. Uh, and you can see even here with higher density, that doesn't look dense, but when you look at the angle, what's catching up? Oh, sorry, this is a Starbucks. So there's even anchor stores that, where they just sort of re, redeveloped homes that are already in the area. This is Monroe. So that home that I was, that I was showing you before, it's actually a little higher density, but it's still modeled after the architectural type in the style of the area. There it is, right there. You can see the angle. Now that might be a little higher than what we're looking for. But you can see that if you look straight on, all you're seeing is an old, you know, Victorian home, but they built density into it.
We saw that in, and you made an other joke, Port Gamble in Washington. Things like that, and then Carmel and.
Been to Carmel.
And Monterey.
Oh, oh, Monterey is gorgeous. Yeah, I love that, and Carmel. So again, hard for me to figure out in a bubble what you all like, but I attempted to pull up some examples of what I've heard.
So that's our homework.
Your homework is to go through this.
And we can say, take it out, picture, if you don't like a picture, move, remove it. Because you don't want somebody to come and say, it's in your book, I wanna build this, if you're five stories.
I'll put up, the last two seconds is the slot, these are the tiers, right, connecting between uses. Greenway, so using greenways to connect between the uses in the Village Center area, creating gathering spaces. And then, like I said, I, I don't know why, every time I see this picture, actually envision the greenway right behind the churches here. I can see that being built. Greenhouses, other types of uses. When I say amphitheater, I think someone almost fainted when I said amphitheater the other day. And I said, well, wait, let me show you a picture. And I'm talking about like a green amphitheater type center, so it's still green, it's still Marvin, but it's got.
Can be mixed use.
Yeah, it's encouraging development. And then the very last tier, which is very passive, are the loop. So you know, the loop that's drawn on the concept plan, that's what this would be, you know, generally. Ideally, something like this, as I told you all, like, you know, that you've got the greenway coupled with an alley road that provides access for traffic other than the main drag. So you've got another access, another place that's helping out here. You know, that, an alley for access that takes traffic off of Newtown.
It's an alley.
Thanks, yeah, right. And so you can't see it here, but you can imagine if there were like, you know, the small stores or whatever in here, that there's another way to access them. And, you know, still have your village greenways. So that's that. That's your homework.
Okay.
We need to call a quick bio break, that's all right.
Okay. So thanks for going through that.
Yeah, it's been a long time since we've seen this.
Yeah, it's been hopefully.
Probably.
Yeah, it's been a while. Oops, oops. Well, thank you guys for the patience. I know there's a lot to digest at one time.
Oh, no, it wasn't one time that I read this. It's been floating around the house.
I'm going to.
Help some sleep.
I, I try to put as many photos in there for Paul as possible.
I, I, I think the photos are great, because that helps what you're saying.
Yeah, it summates what you're saying.
But we just gotta make sure we all agree with it, you know what I mean?
Yes.
If one of us don't like it, it goes, yeah.
Yeah, you do have to.
Well, for me, they're nice highlights too, because if you're a resident, you know, say, hey, I heard you have new land use plan, I wanna see it. And if this is here and they put, you know, a photo is sort of a place mark where they can stop and, and read around it. That looks great.
Okay, yeah. Now, I do, I, I should say, the planning board did suggest taking a couple of sections out, trying to help. But it won't impact some of those Village Center photos much, so I'm gonna do that. I'll try to shorten it a little.
So how much time do you think we need to spend on the signs?
Not much. I think it's more just the legal discussion and.
Any, any changes, any, can we get back to maybe major changes?
Not really. I, not really, temporary, I, I put a new section in for temporary signs, actually put it back in. We had it and we realized that was the best way to take care of that issue. It won't take long, I don't think.
Okay.
Same idea, just highlight the changes, you can look at them, and then hopefully at your next meeting, we can move through it.
Okay.
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 I'll need to back into the room, but I'll wait till Barbie gets here. Does anyone else need a bio break?
Fine, thanks.
Okay, should I go ahead and open it up? That's the staff report. Do you wanna go through the staff report first?
Uh, the meeting, um, we're on what, six? D, consider, discussion and consideration text amendments to signs.
Yeah.
Proposed text amendments addressing signs, entryway monuments and advertisements.
Was this similar to this for Marvin Gardens in the back part of it for?
Yes.
Okay.
So in here is our commercial ordinances that actually have already been adopted by Marvin Gardens. They adopted.
So when we approved it, it was part of their approval, right? So when we approved it, it was part of their approval, right?
They, I had written a report of it, they just adopted it as part of their plan.
Okay.
And I just inserted them in here, so it's consistent.
So, they already have it in their plan, so they can't come to us and say, we didn't know that this is complicated. They already have it, they approved, it was approved, yeah.
That was the objective at the time.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, none of the things we talked about though, except for the, yeah, we just, you know, um, okay, so. Should I, should I let you go, Melanie, you wanna talk about this, it might be best for you to do that.
I mean, the important parts. Long and the short of it is, you've gotta be really careful about regulating content. So we just went through, and any section where it was specifically describing certain content with different regulations, we tried to take out just to comply with the most recent Supreme Court case.
Was it North Carolina, should be included?
No, Arizona.
Really?
Yes.
Then what did you expect to know or?
It was, what, four different opinions were written, so it's very complicated. I've been to a number of CLEs and there's been CLEs that have been, you know, where this is the only topic. And the league doesn't have, hey, here's model sign ordinance, like, it's, it's complicated and it's, um, obviously every jurisdiction, there isn't a model sign ordinance, every jurisdiction is so different anyway, but, um, I don't, I don't know that we need to get into really.
Yeah, I don't know that we, if you were approved and the Marys looked at it, because either you or Rob had mentioned this was coming.
Right, and we tried to add some more kind of goals and purpose in the beginning as the reasons why we're doing this. You know, for safety aesthetics and the various reasons why you're allowed to do that, um.
You shared one thing.
Highlighting the, uh, what's in here, the first section, highlighting like First Amendment rights and the, you know, the want to make sure that we're binding my, right, that goal.
Did we approve this, when we approved more ordinances, is what you're telling me, so we saw?
Well, parts of it, like the, yes, so parts of it, so the commercial, uh.
The commercial piece we did.
Right, like projecting signs and wall signs and illumination, right, exactly.
I know, we, I thought we did a lot of that.
So this is a, is amalgamation between our old sign ordinance, cuz I didn't wanna start from scratch.
Right.
Cuz we already have this as a district, and Asheville, because, um, and it's a particular suburb area, I can't remember, but Asheville, um, is mainly what Marvin Garnes used for commercial. And then Raleigh, because Raleigh was another one they liked, and it was most recent, so I was keeping my fingers crossed that because Raleigh was only recently passed, it would comply with a good portion of this, you know, the SCOTUS requirements. There were still a few that needed some work. Um, and the only one really it came down to, uh, like the biggest change I'll show you is in temporary signs. To give you an example, everyone, I mean, you still see them everywhere you go, political signs is the heading, right? And then it goes on to regulate signs, that's to me at least the best example. Where just by the nature of calling it a political sign, you're designating, you're, you're regulating the content in a sense. And help me, make sure you correct me if I'm wrong here, the best way I can explain it, you're almost regulating the content. And that's an issue, right? The hard part for me was that, then you go to NC DOT and the state statute, and they're putting out regulations for political signs. So I was not quite sure how to, how to make the two jive. So instead, we went to temporary signs, at least that's, yeah, like Carrie did. You take the, if, if you regulate temporary signs, consider political signs a temporary sign. Consider a for sale sign on a house, a temporary sign, and begin to kind of put together regulations that would more or less govern anything that fell within that, um, pot of signs. It's safer than saying, we're gonna regulate a for sale sign, cuz that's content. It's, or, you know, a political sign, which is kind of leaning to content.
Yeah.
So HOAs can't regulate signs technically, or what?
Don't get me started on that.
I mean, cuz we just did that in, in our neighborhood, and it was like, we didn't want everybody's different Joe Blow realty and other, we wanted a standardization, and we were very clear about it. And then Seabrook didn't even allow signs, it's just, you have to get with the.
Their covenants, I mean, when they started Seabrook, it was written in, you're kind of retroactively changing. You wanna adopt sort of like the Valentine Country Club approach, the real estate sign, so everything looks uniform.
Uniform, right, right.
But you would have to get.
But can we do that, we can't do that here in this town if we wanted to say, okay.
Everyone has.
Not, or not allow any signs. And just say, you have to use a Realtor and go find it.
No, you have to allow signs.
Seabrook doesn't.
The Marvin does, yeah, no, the village can't say, no, you can't have signs.
That's different, the Seabrook stuff, that was like all big private development. It wasn't really a municipality per se, I think that's probably what, where the difference lies.
The HOA, right, cuz the, in general, the HOAs have a lot more power, it sounds like.
They do, and they overreach many, many times versus the power they're supposed to have.
Good, so I'm saying, a lot of overreaching there.
Actually, you know, on the fly though, I was just looking at this, remember you made that comment about the thirty to sixty ninety, the thirty to sixty days? Yes, sorry, I should open that one. I didn't, I know you stated it, should we consider amending that?
Sorry, I think, um, I mean, most people put sign, political signs up prior to thirty days before the election.
Yeah.
And I think this, I mean, I think ninety days.
I think, I think the Union County thing for thirty days.
The state.
It's a state, or somebody's thirty days, I know.
That's with NC DOT right of way.
That's what she was explaining today.
NC DOT right of way, they have those rules, but if you wanna put it on, on your, yeah, on your yard, they can tell you, you can.
So I thought that was an interesting discussion, cuz that's where I was getting caught too, because NC DOT doesn't want them within the right of way. For the entire thirty days, right, but if.
And they give you X amount, five days to get it down, I think, or something like that.
And then what about all these signs for like neighborhoods that are being built and stuff?
We don't.
The ones that pop up on the weekends.
Pop up weekends.
We can, we can tell them, take them down, and then whenever you see them, uh, darks, tell them, take them down.
I mean, I can see it coming out of it, it's, it's over, well, that's.
Is that legal, are we being illegal, tell them, take them down?
Well, under this temporary sign, they probably would be able to keep them up, is my one.
So, but we got.
Cuz they actually leave the stakes over here, they leave the stakes and they go staple or however they attach them.
They just slide them over it, but I do remember somebody. We gotta check that. And DOT said if it's a puncture, you know, if somebody was driving down the road and had to go off, you know, they had. You know, maybe they had a safety issue or avoid an accident, and it punctured their tire or caused a wreck, whoever put the signs up would be liable, remember that, that was like, we were on a plane.
But then I see the little stump grain signs that are somehow put on them with the phone number, they're still out there. We haven't, I mean.
Our zoning, our enforcement.
Enforcement guy needs to go in and go climb up a tree and take them down.
There is one up in the tree.
Well, one's over here by let. As you come out, because when I'm parked to talk to the, um, the guys that were surveying, I, as I'm pulling out, I'm going, it's a stump grain.
Was it up in the tree?
Yep.
Cuz there's another one on the end of.
Over here.
There's the airation sign. Can I talk this out with you, I just wanna throw this out there with you, is that I did, I was wondering about those signs, those signs refer to, when they're up, they refer to what, an event, like an open house? Is that why they have to come down, like in your minds?
Do you tell them about those weekend signs, or the one, the stump writing signs?
Oh, sorry, I'm back to the.
The weekend signs.
Yeah, what is it about those signs that?
It's cluttering.
Well, no, not that, I mean, what do you feel justifies the fact that they're up and that they're down? Does that make sense?
It's an eyesore.
That they have to be taken down.
But they take them down.
But it's an eyesore whilst they're.
Why, you're asking why do, why are they taking them down, is that what you're asking?
I'm always asking, like, why are they?
How do they follow a different definition?
Yeah, because.
I don't think they do, because of the stump writing stuff, I hate to pick on him, I don't.
He's after you.
There's a gutter sign down here, what if that guy puts it up for three days, takes it down for three days, puts it up for three days, is he legal?
Yeah.
I think that's.
I get what I'm asking, because we have, and I'll be honest, I didn't see anything in our code even before that said that they had to come down.
See, I thought there was.
Unless, unless, it's advertising an event. So it does say that if you're advertising an event, even then though, they've got seven days.
But that's where the whole, um, Supreme Court said no, because it was the church signs, that whole case is about a church that would sort of, you know.
Bobby Boo.
No, first church services, I think, and then they said, oh, you have to take it down within, you know, I don't know, twenty-four, forty-eight hours, but other people could do it longer. Like, they were shortening the time period that they could have their signs up. Right, and they said, no, that's, you're regulating content, you can't do that.
So that's where I, that's where too, those signs occurred to me, and I thought, how, how do we?
So they can't even put it on their billboards, is that where they changed the sign that says mass at ten thirty or something?
I just said that can, we can't tell.
Oh, that's not temporary sign, that's, no, no.
I'm sorry.
I guess, from my perspective, if you say we need to do it to be, to be legal and consistent.
We do it.
We do it.
Yeah.
So that means, cuz the way this is written is they could stay out there indefinitely, well.
There's gotta be a reason why they're putting and taking them down.
I thought the county regulated it.
Well, I don't, we don't know.
That's what I think, or they're in state right of ways, they must all be in state right of ways, have to be.
That's probably it.
But even that, they can, they have up to seven days to take down after an event?
Yeah, but I guess.
And the event is a weekend event. Maybe they're down to reset the timing or something, so there's gotta be a reason.
See, in hundreds of cities, you're not allowed to have any signs, that's why you see the guy with twirling things, every time I go to California.
That was your first job.
You know, you got the guys with the twirly signs, it's cuz they can't put out temporary signs, they can't put out sales signs.
Oh, how about that?
Now they can with this decision, yeah.
Wow, interesting.
So let's think about that, we'll put it on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna support whatever you say.
The weekend signs.
Yeah, cuz I mean, even the, it's an issue like with landscapers, if they wanna put a sign out that they're, they do your yard. I mean, sometimes that's.
The HOA probably don't allow that.
With the HOA, yeah, they, they, you know, or a security sign and, you know, secured by so-and-so. I mean, technically, those are temporary signs, cuz they're not.
We have one here, it's a project identification sign, which I think is more likely, cuz if they're working on a project, then.
Well, it's, it's like, say you hired him for the year, it's not a project.
It's a little throwaways, but it says lawn care by Joes.
Right, and I think just by definition, even though this is a larger sign shown here, it falls under this type of sign. Temporary sign that identifies the name of the development project, owner, developer, future tenant, homeowner, architect, engineer, contractor, so contractor. Right, and then, um.
But is there one for service, that's what I'm, cuz service would be a landscaping that I've hired for a year to do.
It's a big contractor, yeah, it's a contractor.
It's a contractor, and it falls under project.
Identification sign, yeah.
See, I think the HOAs are more strict, strict on this, yeah, they are a lot more than we are, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, this is on, you know, almost anything outside of an OCH, HOA, but twenty-four square feet per side, thirty-two square feet, yeah.
From, from what I'm reading, um, who was the, the planner a few years ago?
Karen Dunn?
Anna.
Anna, Ellen, yeah.
Anna cost me a lot of money.
On those signs, I think I heard about this.
She made me take, she, she wasn't mean about it, she said, you know, you need to take that sign down, it's not compliant. It was thirty-two square feet, so that thousand dollar sign went in the trap, and I reintroduced another five hundred dollar sign to be compliant, she gave me a letter, says it's compliant, but I'm reading this and she was wrong.
Now, this is me, this is new.
Oh, this is new, okay, this was Anna, I'm upset. I didn't even question it, I just, she said I didn't do it, I did it.
Now, it, it was thirty-two, was what our ordinance was before though, so if it's.
I had thirty-two.
You had thirty-two, well, then you're right. I did, I think I tried to, yeah, no, thirty-two, that's, that was what was there before, I took new, other new ordinances in Melbourne.
Is my math right, four by eight, is that thirty-two?
Wow.
Very close.
You know why that had, right, cuz at the park, when we put up that contract sign?
Right.
That's where the thirty-two came from, I know that, and yeah, it's, it's been there for a while.
All right, so looks like signs are, um, we've discussed them before, you guys gave an overview of.
The only thing that was not new, that we didn't have a big discussion on, but it wasn't new, was in your old one that you had a public hearing for, was the rural entryway gates and the monument signs.
And we, I was doing about a public hearing, and we had no one come to talk about that.
No, and that is what elongated this ordinance in a way, but if you, so let me just wanna quickly point out that that is sort of an ordinance on to itself, like, I wouldn't count that as the sign ordinance.
Can you separate it, I think?
Yes.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, and.
Now, if we're eventually gonna do branding signs, do they have a place in this ordinance?
Yes, we do, we have landmark signs, yeah.
Can we do them just like flat signs at the line, no, which one do you say you like?
So, just so you know, our current ordinance had, it is a little strange with signs, each section, see how each, um, each section has a section number?
Right.
It almost, it's spanned, I don't know how many, or ten different sections, right. So what I did is I took, so there's two left over that I didn't need, um, so they're now reserved.
You did that?
Yeah, even or not, I know, and so I took one of them, and I made it subdivision, entryway monuments, signage, and appurtenances. So everything having to do with monument subdivision signs and or rural entryway gates and all that stuff is its own section.
Robert, you have a, a, a sign story to?
Your dry floor.
I think you guys threw it to them all.
It's not a subdivision.
The monument sign, I remember that one, that was, oh my god. Yeah, you forgot about that, yeah.
So I just wanted to.
I was married, I think I was married with.
That was the first run-in I had with Mary. That was an adversarial conversation there.
Oh, the chess.
The chess.
Oh, let's go back.
Take the more positive.
Always kumbaya or.
Oh, that's why we took through it.
He took it, just so you know, Ron did.
Of course, always.
Of an equal opportunity.
So before we shut this down, you guys have any questions about the rural entryway gate monument thing? Cuz that's, I need to get feedback from you about that.
Okay, so, isn't that when we did have a public hearing, so if we did have questions then, is it changed since then?
I don't know how much detail you went into that, that night, and I didn't hear anything, I just want confirmation that you were all fine.
If we had a public hearing, I would think this group.
You want the minutes for that public hearing?
I'm okay, as long as they say they're okay, then, again, then I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, I thought we, we approved it that night.
We did, I do remember, cuz it was someone, it must have been you, that said we had to get it done because of it was holding us up. And I think we approved it, yeah, so I think we're okay.
Okay, no, not approved it, but, cuz we still had to have the attorney review, right?
Well, yeah.
But I know you're in. Okay, okay, good, then we're, then we're, that's fine.
Tough question, cuz I was reading through it and I saw projecting, projecting signs.
Oh, yeah.
And then I started thinking about projection and its use for putting signage, projecting it on the side of a building. Do we have, would that be covered under light ordinance, or would that be covered under signage or a little bit?
I would definitely say.
EB is making everything possible.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, you go.
Let me look at the illumination signs as a protection.
I don't remember that.
Under a, it's not even an illuminated sign though.
Projecting signs, which project from the building, but I'm talking about like a light, like people put up.
No, I know what you're talking about, cuz I've seen, they put like words over someone else's building, yeah.
Says something, but look at that.
They call it like, uh, there's a certain type of graffiti they call it in some areas, but it was just something, do we need to put something in there to protect against that, or can we restrict that?
And it's not illumination, I'm not sure I understand it.
Yeah, it's not, so.
So it's, so you, it's a sign you would project on the side of a, a building, like a side of a building.
From a overhead projector type thing?
Any, any device, I mean, they have them now, technically for, you see them at Christmas time, instead of people putting up lights, they can actually project lights up on the thing, well, they can do signs Merry Christmas, or put.
But now you can actually, you know, punch in a message, and it will project a message just like a sign over door. And people have been doing it to other people's.
Technology, that's wild, I have never.
Bad neighbor.
Pick up. So, I'm telling you. Before I look at the illumination section, I, I don't think we have anything like that, if you want, I can look. And what would you?
If it's allowed, I think you just say no illumination signage, no projected illumination.
Now, what we do have is a provision in there that says, if it's not permitted, like, if it's not listed as permitted, then it's not permitted.
Right, okay.
But prohibited are illuminated highly reflective signs or spotlights.
Spotlight.
But those hinder the vision of motors or bicyclists, so.
But see, that could be, this could be the same thing, it could be destructive, like, you used to have people do the strobe lights. There's a place off three twenty-one that has a strobe light at night, and it's like a.
The movie theater.
No, it's just like, they'll, it's like oil changes, seven ninety-five or something.
Oh, here's one, this is prohibited, signs, lights, rotating disc, words, or other devices not erected by public authority, which may be erroneously construed as governmental signs or emergency warning signs.
Oh, wow, that covers part of it.
That covers part of it, yeah.
So that guy that's over here in this neighborhood, right around the corner here, that lights up his whole Christmas thing, and it's a.
I'm thinking more in a commercial sense, I'm not saying, I mean, if you're a resident and you wanna have a laser light show against your house for a period of time.
Signs that move mechanically, you can't have signs that move mechanically.
I think we're covered by saying if it's not listed, it's not.
Not permitted.
Not permitted, right?
Lashing light signs, yeah.
Are we covered that way?
I mean, no, because we have a big section on what's prohibited.
So, it seems like just a quick sentence.
Illuminous signs, neon signs are prohibited, so I think we're good.
I mean, you almost have to.
I almost have to.
But it wouldn't take much to.
Subjected.
It would be an off-site projection sign, because it's not on, on premises.
Then add that to the.
I'd keep it simple and say projection sign, if you say on property or off property, we're just gonna place it.
Yeah, we'll add a number fifteen.
Light projected signs, and then that could be.
I think that's.
That's wide, wide open.
Light projected signs.
Not allowed, that's a light projected sign.
Okay, so anything else you need to do for us to look at?
No, that's it, I'm gonna update these few notes, and then bring it back to you with the revisions.
You're fine with everything?
Absolutely.
Most sections of it, uh?
Yep.
Okay.
And then when you see it next, it has to be in the form that you would write that.
One, one adopted it, yeah.
Yes, and then you can go ahead and approve it if you're next to me.
Okay, so Joe?
Yeah?
We promised Joe he'd have opportunity to look at it, how soon, how much time do you need?
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm fine, she, she's fine with that, I just haven't, I haven't, full disclosure, I haven't actually read all of it, so. I'm not sure if all of you did. So I'm just, I'm just, uh, I'm just putting it out there that I did, so, um, so we'll, I'll trust your, uh, um, thing, but I guess if I can't sleep, I'll go back to reading.
Works well.
And find out.
Projection sign.
Oh, yeah?
It was a stop sign.
It was a stop sign.
But you were reading that, yeah, you were saying it was a prohibited. It's in Japan, uh, so.
So just, before we finish, so then, we talked about that crossing sign to get over from Innes Brook, and all that, and stuff like that, but that's, should be okay there.
That's a D O T approved, yeah.
I'm looking at them, is that okay?
Uh, that, we got, is that a question?
It's not ours, it's a state thing, because it's a state.
That's a state sign.
Yeah, and we don't regulate state signs.
If it's the same person who came to us, I don't know if it is, but I told them the same thing, I said, it, you have to go to N C D O T if you want a different type of stop sign, then they were like.
Oh, you're talking about the color, the different colored one that they wanted to put up?
No, they had, they had, it was, someone from Innes Brook came to Village Hall, and they wanted to.
Green or something?
No, it was a combination, stop sign, street sign, so it had a stop sign and it had a street sign, and I said.
On Marvin Road, they were.
No, in, in, in Innes Brook, yeah.
They are too, for that.
I had to talk to that, because they said, well, the village take it down, and I said, we won't, but.
When we take over the village, we will. Right, we'll have a policy or whatever it is.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, by the way, that's in here too, you saw that, the street signs from Marvin, okay, right, that's it then.
All right, thank you.
Put this on the next agenda?
Yes, sir. You're doing catch-ups, does that have a reasonable timeframe for you?
Um, yes, for this, because this is pretty much done, I think a couple minor edits and all of them.
Okay. You're good with that, Joe?
Yep.
Weekend signs we're looking into, and then off-site signs.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on, seven, a new business note item scheduled there, so we'll move on to eight, update on Village Hall design slash.
Oh, gosh, I forgot about that one, okay.
We have a meeting next group?
Yep, next Thursday.
I probably can go through this pretty quick, I think.
It's the permits I'm curious about.
Okay, so, yeah, let me move to.
I thought some of these were done, because the timeline we saw last time was.
Robin had said.
Yeah.
We were getting everything in, except for, of course, we wouldn't have any building stuff, so the architect is engineer down it.
That's what I was, I'm questioning myself, and it might have, might have been, but it might have been deleted.
Oh, because those attachments?
Who knows?
Right.
Well, according to the engineer, um, I put this first, because I was a little confused myself, um, that N C D O T permit was still needed.
And that's just the driveway?
It's just the cut of, but she.
But you needed driveway access.
She said she had that.
She said she had it, she did.
I'll tell you why I know even for sure, because on the day of, the day I left, I got a, um, packet from Nita at N C D O T asking me to sign the driveway permits, that she had not even reviewed, they have you sign them first, and then they make comments, so they, they haven't finished yet.
Oh, wow, okay. But now they're in process.
They should be in process, no, yeah, um, stormwater permits were still needed, um, stop me if you want me to elaborate, otherwise I'll just move through it.
As long as you're following up on them.
I am, the stormwater permits, what happened, I'll get to that in a minute, I'll tell you.
Oh, you don't have to, as long as you follow up on them.
All right.
Robert just wants it done.
Literally right, okay, village engineering review, still needed, um, erosion and, and county are done.
Yay.
Yes, those are good.
Come here, then.
Now, this was important, um, I need to tell you about the work order revision, I, I, I think I emailed this to you, this is more or less what I emailed to you last week. So, N C Deener had a requirement that, um, the parcel complied with the seasonal high water table. They had this requirement out there, and it was only imposed on certain parcels, and I guess somewhere between design and permitting application, they reinstituted this requirement, so.
We don't get grandfathered in the matter?
No, what they did say to him was, they said to Tristan, look, if you resubmit everything within thirty days. We won't make you go all the way back through the pro, the process and pay, pay.
Oh, wow.
So that's why there was this mad rush, now, so I'll tell you that, I was sort of in another position, um, when I found out about this, because I guess perhaps had been instigated maybe just as, as Robin left, I don't know, but what happened is Tristan spoke to me on literally a Thursday, he said, our permit application's due tomorrow, but it's going to be a work order change, because he needed to amend the plans, what do I do? Now, I'm hoping I'm not in trouble, but I said, I think you better go ahead and do them, because I, I knew there was no way to get approval. Um, and it sounded like it was already underway, I, I, I couldn't tell, so, um, we are going to get a new work order for the revisions that were required in order to meet with this, um, this, uh, seasonal high water table information. Um, the end result, do you want to know the end result, or you read this and you're good?
I'm good, I read it.
Okay.
I know, it's good for you guys.
N C D O T comments, did you guys read it, are you good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, tree mitigation, same thing, uh, talked to you guys a little about this, thanks, Robert, you provided me a little bit of information about the soil. Tristan was just a little bit concerned that we don't move it until we know for sure.
Do we, Robert, do we think it's still one up on five twenty-one, or am I not sure?
Yeah, but to his point, don't move an ounce of it until it's been.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we do know who that person was, there was somebody that was offering free dirt?
Yeah, Robin and someone worked it out, they just.
We don't know who it is, though, right?
Yeah.
Oh, we do, oh, I'm sorry.
It's, yeah, it's right up here.
Okay.
Oh, where they're doing the, in South Carolina? Where they're doing the, um.
From the road, it's beautiful right there, but he'll, he'll have to look at it.
Yeah, because you don't want to break something on site and then have to.
Dirt spray is the trucking.
Yeah.
And that's not far.
If you bump, if you had some bum dirt.
That's not far, so that's good.
Yeah, if you have bad dirt, and then you have to move it, you may have to, you know.
So you.
So you need to, you'll have, you'll all have to orient me a little bit.
Okay.
How much authorization do I need for things like this, so, like, don't you need to make a motion that I go ahead and make this?
I think there's an, isn't it up to ten thousand dollars? There's a certain number.
It feels like, to me, this would be something you'd have to make a motion to approve, but I'm not sure.
We, we can do that, too.
Well, which one are we making a motion?
The work order?
Yes, uh, well, uh, that too, so there's going to be the work order, um, also this ge- uh, geo-testing of the infilter. Um, so I'm going to need you to approve of that, we're asking.
Did either one give you ballpark numbers?
Uh, well, the, um, work order is in and around, high threes, four thousand dollars. And, um, what else?
And when you get, when you get over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's like a, the two hundred and fifty, uh, thousand buffer, we don't want to go over that.
Well, and this is where.
So instead of making a motion on individual items, can we make a motion to authorize her to a set dollar amount? Is that what you meant by the ten thousand?
Yeah.
Or is that already in place?
Well, I think there's something to do.
Lisa and stuff.
Not anymore, we looked.
There's, there's nothing online that the administrator can spend up to seven thousand dollars.
It used to be five thousand.
There should be, if you can set up policy for that, yeah, there should be something on the V drive.
That was for purchasing, like, if they had to buy, like, equipment or chainsaw or something like that.
But this is a, this is a funded project.
Right, right, it's already funded, so, I don't think I'm going to say, don't spend money to get the soil, if it's right, right?
Lisa used to have a, that may have changed, but Melody had to do, McClark had to do a pre-aud, which always confused me about.
Right, the pre, that's, that may be why, maybe that's why they changed the policy for Lisa, because Chris and I had a discussion about that.
Okay.
Um, this five thousand dollars that I remember too, that was discretionary fund, right? But on the other hand, finance officers like everything that comes through to have a pre-aud it, in a sense, knowing that the funds are there before you go into contract. So, um, she was under the impression, now, the finance officer has five thousand dollars discretion, she can spend to get people through a crunch and jump, and then it's saved.
Whatever, right.
I didn't have a chance to look, she didn't, had not heard of that Lisa policy that we talked about, um, and I had forgotten.
We had a policy when we were doing the park.
Instead of having to look for it, why don't we just make a new motion?
Well, we couldn't do that, but we also, when we were doing the park, we, we said, you can spend up to fifteen thousand dollars on, on these items, and then the meeting let us know where we're at with these texts, so you put it on the consent agenda, and we can discuss it, but that way we weren't holding anything up, because we, we got seven hundred and fifty thousand for, you know, for the building.
Right, and that makes sense on the park part, because that was a capital of the, a capital project.
Right, right, and same thing, yeah, so should we just, should we just make a motion to, to authorize the administrator to up to fifteen thousand dollars, that should be enough to get us to the next meeting.
Execute contracts in the amount, not to exceed, something like that.
Not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
I would think we would have some type of anticipated fee schedule, so we know we've got the funding for the project, right? But then we should have a fee schedule associated with various phases, and let's say we get an estimate of fifteen grand to come in, and they say, oh, you gotta do this other thing. There should be some type of change process or change management request that would authorize above and beyond that, not to exceed number. Do we have any kind of projected budget for the various items?
I don't know how detailed it is, there is a spreadsheet, it's not quite as detailed as some of the things.
Well, like, does it have site work, guess, estimated fifty grand or whatever?
I think it did, I think I do remember seeing.
It is pretty broad, it's, it's generally like that.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry if I'm unsure, only because I'm thinking about things right now that I'm about to ask you for, not just this, but whether or not R F Ps, for example, are worked into that engineering contract, and that, I doubt it's, it's got that kind of granularity in the, um, spreadsheet that I've seen, I haven't seen that in there.
Okay.
What day is our meeting next week?
Yeah, Thursday.
You have a meeting next week?
Twenty-eight.
I'm okay giving her discretion.
For, for something like that, if it's like five grand or something, but I'm just saying for future, if we know, or if we estimate the, you know, a body of work in a certain phase is going to cost a hundred grand, we shouldn't have to make motions every time.
For every, for every ten thousand dollars.
You know, if you're within ninety percent of that budgeted number, you're good, but if it gets beyond that.
I think once we, once we get a bid back, if they accept it that, then I think you're right, then I think we can break in, how much goes for the papers, how much goes for the trees. Bring the dirt in, you know, what, different.
Because there's always going to be an incidental thing, there, there's going to be things where you might spend less, and there may be things that come up and spend more.
Right, right.
But to your point, I mean, something like, if it's three grand or something, there's no sense in delaying the inevitable, I mean, that's pretty much a no-brainer, because you have to do that in a certain time, or we have to start over again, so there's a time element and costs associated with that.
So is there, no, there's an amount that we should stop at that gets into, what's it called, R F P?
The bid policy, yeah, that's, would be over thirty, right?
Over thirty.
Thirty thousand. Thirty thousand. If we. Thirty thousand.
Fifteen, we're okay?
Yeah.
And then you can come to us with how, how it's being spent?
Yeah, I'm still just out of comfort, I would, I'd be emailing you all and telling you.
No, that's fine, Joe, yeah, no, no, we want you to be scared to spend.
We just don't want, I just don't want you to be in the position you were with.
In the last week, yeah, that is, I was, I was shaking the whole time, thinking, what do I do?
Okay, so, we want to make a motion to, uh, what do we call this, under contract, because, will there be contracts for each one of these pieces?
Well, let me, can I list for you what I'm looking at right now, I don't know if this will help, but it'll make me feel better at least. One, it'll be the, the, the geo-soiling test.
Okay.
The other one is the, um, work order for engineering, the other one is a change, um, work order for the architecture, the architectural.
Changes on that.
Yeah, um, which, by the way, I know there was concerns, everything that was put onto Photoshop that you all looked at, um, I'm not confident in making, because the architect had already said, number one, they were faux windows, they're not real, and number two, it did not, I would not change the footprint. So they've confirmed now that everything that I pictured on those Photoshop things are not going to change your design.
There's ten thousand dollars in savings in, ever engineering costs, giving us all those options.
Yeah, so, well, I hope so, um, but I just wanted to make sure you felt comfortable with that, so, that's one, two, three, and then the last one is this pending review of the contract, I haven't had time to look at it yet, but usually you have your engineer develop the scope, right, before you bid, the bid packet, and I'm hoping that that was in the bid that you have with E S P, but I don't know that for sure, and I'm pretty sure you're gonna need that, right, you want them to put a bid packet together.
Yes, I would think so.
So those are the big four things I see coming fairly soon.
Okay. So all I would ask is this, you don't tell anyone how much authority we get. Yeah, I got ten thousand to spend.
Right, okay, so I just, so you feel comfortable knowing what's coming coming?
So we have a motion then?
Is, is, do you believe that fifteen thousand covers that?
I think so.
Okay, and if it doesn't, just get back to us, and you can call four of us up or five of us up, and we got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, not to exceed fifteen.
Right, and, uh, for, uh, we can list the four, the four pieces?
No, I mean, if, it, I mean, I, I really don't, if we're gonna give her the authority to do that, because it sounds like it needs to be done anyway, so, I mean, instead of having another meeting and stuff, and she's, you know, fifteen thousand should cover it, that they're gonna do soil tests, whatever, if those are gonna need to be done, so.
And then you'll probably have to get back to us, what's, to bring the soil over, or what's, because that was like eighty thousand dollars to buy the soil, remember that was, eighty, eighty-seven thousand dollars? No, not to truck it, just to buy it.
Okay.
And that was what we were gonna pay.
Right, so I don't know what's gonna cost to truck it.
Yeah, they estimate close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so what's gonna cost to truck it, yeah.
Okay, so let's look at that geo...
That'd be another one with Chris, and at that point, we'll have a more entitled budget, I would think.
Right, well, even just this is...
Get outside of your comfort level, if you need to call me, you can, if you need to call, uh, John. John knows a lot more about dirt and stuff than he'll handle that on.
Okay.
The DOT is basically dirt, gravel, and pavement.
Oh, really, John, you're one of those, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, oh, I'm glad you told us.
And use him if, you know, you need to get the cuts on the, the town hall.
Yeah, so that was a big deal, I didn't realize, and it seemed to be to Tristan too, that our own engineers had not really reviewed it in detail, so...
Okay.
Um, the only problem also is stuck, because now there, I'm waiting for the revised plans. There was no point in me sending the ones I had to our encars, uh, also the new ones as soon as they come in.
Uh, aside note, did we sign our, did we sign layeasements for DOT, the mechanic circles?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we already got checks.
We already got checks. We got checks.
We got checks.
Leash, I remember she checked...
And we need ones for the roundabouts.
Yeah, it's the roundabouts.
Okay, sorry, yeah, sorry, that, no...
That's the new England in there.
Yeah, we got three big checks.
'Cause there, there was this note, I was getting confused, he said, you know, from DOT.
On that, on that note, did we, 'cause I know we delayed, because a lot of the landowners went back and asked for appraisals. Did we get an appraisal too? Appraisals too, or did we just go with what they...
I don't know if they gave us an increased one, I, we did ask it, we said someone...
No, Robin, Robin said, "Here's what they're offering, do, do we wanna take extra time to go back and have appraisals done?" And we're talking, it's like a...
Well, we said we, we said we knew it unless other people, and I think they, all the other landowners did get appraisals.
I think what we elected though is if it holds anything up, don't do it.
We did say that.
Yes.
But, but I think they wanted the impression, since they had to do it with that, and maybe, they might've did it, so, you know, but I don't know.
Go back on what they originally offered and what they gave us in the check, but I don't know if it was...
I think at the end of the day, I just wanted us not to be the ones holding it up.
And I, I think we made that clear, but I think all these other landowners did ask for appraisals, or got appraisal, so they could get the most for, bang for their buck, if you will.
Okay, so that takes care of that, any other?
So you have a, we have a motion.
Oh, this, sorry.
Yeah, we made a motion.
Okay, yeah, could do that first.
You got the four pieces?
Yes, I got the four pieces, and not to exceed, uh, fifteen thousand, so I need, need you all to vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Robert?
I was...
Okay, okay, I'm here, um, so, passage unanimously. And then anything else on that?
Um, just to be sure, I'm, you two, that, that's clarified, he had mentioned to me some, this is what he mentioned. He questioned whether the village had dedicated the right of way to NCDOT. Do you, are you guys thinking?
Don't remember it.
That, is that what you're talking about, like those little bits of land?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, that we actually gave them their, the pieces they needed.
Yes, yes.
So Tristan said that we had not, according to...
Well, we already got checks.
We got checks.
So...
We already spent it, tell them.
Checks are in the bank.
Where do you think the fifteen thousand came from?
Okay, no, all right, I understand, okay, so you got checks.
But that is, I guess that's important to know, because I don't, I don't wanna find out in a month that we're the ones that didn't sign off when we needed to sign off.
And it's holding up the construction of it.
Yeah, so if you could confirm.
Okay.
Well, I would be pretty sad though, if they don't know they sent us a check.
No, I didn't.
I think they wouldn't send a check if they...
So, we good there?
Yeah.
I think so.
All right, I'd, I'd ask, I'd, I'd like to ask the appeal one more time for a motion to have some sort of public information about what we're about to do, before we break around. Because if we've worked on this for eight years, we should actually celebrate this, we should be proud of this, and have some sort of...
You think it's something at the park, or, I mean, I'm not against it.
No, I'm good.
I mean, some sort of thing that, at a regular meeting, no, it should be at a regular meeting, where they can come in and and voice their opinions about it.
Doesn't have to be a regular meeting there, Joe, it can be, you know, a meeting just, people have any input, that's fine.
But in the spirit of what we've done in the past.
But I mean, public information meetings aren't usually...
They're not.
Public information?
Remember when you do a public information meeting?
Involvement meetings, public involvement. Because I'm not even sure we even had a public hearing, I actually asked Nick on that, did we even have a public hearing for this?
You don't have to.
Does it require one, because it's a, it's a permitted, and I had to look at this too, it's a permitted use in the R District? So because it's already a permitted use, it's not a zoning change, and that's why there's no public hearing. Doesn't mean you can't have one, or you can't have one at all.
Okay, okay, so it wasn't a rezoning?
No.
It was an approved use?
If you wanna put something on the schedule...
Yeah, okay.
I don't think, I never, I didn't ever wanna suggest there was a bad idea to do that, I just don't... I think now, you know, eight years later isn't the time to hold things up, we can do one.
Yeah, I'm not looking the whole things up, I'm just looking to, to, to just, i- if, if we're proud of what we're doing here, we should celebrate, and should have some sort of, like, understanding, or the community should have an understanding before we spend one year's budget essentially of...
How much lead I'm doing here.
You know?
I'm just gonna suggest something too, it, I don't know, just throwing this out there, I hopefully I won't be in trouble for it, but the land use plan is never done, right? It's not a bad idea, even within the next week or two, um, to put that out for a public involvement meeting. Village Hall ties into the land use plan.
No, have the purchasers on the east lawn, people...
Right, and then...
But remember, people can come in, and just like the, the planning board, everybody can say, "Well, I like this over here, I like that." The problem is, you can't get a thousand people, a thousand people.
But that's to your point, before, that's why they elected us, and we can make that decision, and stuff like that, but I, I just feel, if there's something we can tie into that, I think that's a great idea, especially land use plan.
Just, you know, I'm, like, people should do it, but go into it knowing that some of the guys that show up. You, did you see what Chip wrote on the poster board at the park? Am I the one that saw it?
I, I was out of the country, remember, so I wasn't here.
Uh, he wrote...
Close to the point of not, or true public, 'cause not all of us read that stuff that was on there, so it wasn't really like a public information, because it wasn't presented.
He wrote right on the comments section, "This council has no vision." He's not your resident board. Not like, like this big, like her feedie there. So expect that, but I think we should, that shouldn't keep us from having something like that.
No, no, take it forward to this.
Well, a public involvement meeting, typically we have, um, you know, sign-up sheets where people can leave their comments, right? Um, the clerk or staff or whoever records, you know, uh, whatever comments are made. I mean, you can, you can fashion it however you want.
Right.
Um, but, you know, I, I, I don't envision it needs to be a big event, that's, that's what I'm thinking, is not even so much because you don't want it to be advertised, you do, but we don't have a heck of a lot of time or resources, so I don't know how much money you wanna put into, like, boards and things like that. So we'd need some...
Well, that's what I was just looking at, it's more like a meeting and stuff like that, well, here's what we're doing, and have some boards up, because we've done that before, kinda showing what our latest drawing is of, what it's gonna look like, and what the interior's gonna look like, what we're gonna spend on it, and, you know, why we're doing it, and all those things that we should, quite frankly, be proud of and celebrate, if that's what, you know, we're trying to do.
Well, and we did put, you know, we had information way back now, I'm reaching out, you know, like history, we had researched the different parcels, and why this parcel, for example, looked better than others, I mean, you can put together all kinds of...
Yeah, but I don't know if at this point, it's mainly at this point, you're just celebrating, this is what we've been working on, we wanted to share it with you, we've been saving for it for years, you know, we have, we started back in 'oh six saving for it, it's not before we even got here.
So do you want me to propose a date, or not?
You don't have to, just let us, shoot us an email when you're caught up.
Okay.
And, I don't know, does it have to be a council meeting? I don't like, you know...
I, I, my first...
Public input meetings, I'm gonna, probably take orders of them, I'll go to this one.
If you want honest input, you don't want to stand over the people, you let them come in and look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, any public input meeting, I've been at, it was like in a room like this.
Right, people walk around and talk, yeah.
Walk around, they talk.
Yeah.
But, you know, the one, I just referenced that poster board that was written on, I don't remember if it's Lisa or Robin, but we invited all these landowners.
We did, yeah.
Specifically...
That was, they were, come early.
Early.
They came early.
For the land use plan, that's where that poster board came from, that's, that's the one that I remember seeing. And that was just casual, just poster board on it.
Right, right.
That's sort of what I was thinking, just to close out the land use plan portion too. Um, so if you could put...
You can give copies of the, what you can do is make some copies of the executive part of it, you know what I mean?
Executive summary.
If somebody wants something with the executive part of the land use plan, so they have to take hold.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, yeah.
How far are we out from that being finished, do you think?
From us?
Land use plan.
Well, so it's, probably after next week, I would hope, I would hope we can maybe get it done, and then maybe the following weeks.
Is there one more planning board meeting on it?
We have a, yeah, but we, we decided to do a special meeting in two weeks.
And they also said that we can do...
And for you to move forward.
We can move forward, if they make any tweaks, that, you know, then they can send those, and we can decide to, you know, to modify it, so we don't hold it up. So maybe it's after next week, maybe, look at that.
Or is it a public involvement meeting?
It's possible, 'cause I don't wanna hold up the town, town hall piece either, right? 'Cause that can't get done until, 'cause, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna send a bid out and then have a public input meeting, you know what I mean?
How long do bids, we, bids were what, I, I don't know, I've never, we've never done it, so what is the process?
So, and that's, this will be determined in the scope, like, do you want landscaping, do you just want, you know, you, the grading for sure would have to be done, the, um, obviously, architecture and structure would have to be done.
I would think landscape is part of it, I think, I, yeah.
That's, you know, one of those negligibles, but...
Yeah.
It's up to you, I mean, certain things have to be done, for sure. Grading, retention ponds, things that are all required by the state.
Pavers, yeah, because it's part of the...
Yes, yeah, if you saw my note, they've increased the pavers.
That, that, that's, that's pretty tough, yeah.
The only thing, I, right off the top of my head, the first thing that's negative of all is landscaping.
So the, so it goes to the engineer, they put out the bid packets and stuff, and then we, we put a time limit for the...
Yeah, like fifteen, fifteen days to get back to us.
Fifteen days, wow.
Well, or, yeah.
Is that reasonable, Robert?
What were you doing, Robert, fifteen days, right, you got a bid?
I'm trying to remember what you guys did when we did the park, 'cause remember, I got the...
You got, you got the baffle.
Thank you, I got the baffle.
When we thought of you...
It didn't hurt, I was fifty grand less than the next closest.
Well, that, that did help.
Building some money on the table. Um, I feel like that one, Lisa would remember, but I, I feel like that one was like...
It was a log.
Fifteen days.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's fifteen days, yeah.
I remember, I didn't even know about it, and then I found out, and I didn't get mine until...
The last minute, if I remember correctly, yeah, yeah.
And...
So fifteen days...
So I'll do a refresher on the rules and stuff for that, but...
So if you're looking, if you're looking at our meeting next week's to twenty, what?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighth, the following week would be like the fifth.
It's going by so fast, okay.
And then it goes, the bid goes out after the fifth, you know, maybe sixth or seventh, after we look at the comments and stuff, and it comes back fifteen days later, so by the end of the month, you're, you know, you got somebody on there and starting to work.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a lot to say, but I'm not real, um, I, I don't have a lot of experience in a bid like that.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can advise you all day long on how to build a building, but how the engineer wants to break it up, I don't know. You know, I don't know if he's gonna wanna, if he's gonna say you need to, to do all your grade work separate.
You may wanna do it in phases.
Yeah, I don't know what he's gonna tell you. He may say, "Bid it all out as one," like the road thing, you know, how we, we, John said, "Structure this way and this way." He may tell you, I don't know.
And that's...
I think when we did the park, we, we were trying to put it all together, and then, then someone says, "It'd be better if you split it up, and you got one piece, somebody else got the road," you know, so that wasn't the piece we got. But I think this, you know, that's a... Did you get the meeting votes in, Joe?
Where you put the stuff to clean the bathrooms.
Boy, this is a problem with this man.
I'm not complaining.
Okay, you're gonna get the bathroom...
I got to know, you know what, I got to know the landing.
That's true, yeah, yeah, that's true.
They're nice guys.
You got work done still?
I tell you what, when I spent lots of money on the table, that fifty K was just part of it. The other was all the hours of landing.
Yeah.
But they were good.
We had to pay you that.
I wasn't getting paid for those, Bobcat.
Oh, yeah, the Bobcat work.
Through the track, through the track.
Come over here, tell me what you think of this house.
I don't even think you can do that, it was, getting a landing was...
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, moving on.
So, you okay, moving on there?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
All right, so next up, we have update on subdivision road process.
I'm gonna turn it over to you, I touched on it a little bit, but...
Yeah, she did, great job, thank you, thank you. Um, I did talk with Philip Moxley again, um, about them, and he, um, suggested that, um, to probably you go through, uh, NCDOT.
Oh.
So I asked him, "Why couldn't we piggyback on some of their road projects that they're gonna have?"
Yep.
Or piggyback on the roundabout project that they're gonna have? Well, he said, "Well, that would be a good idea," um, and they usually do Union County in February or March.
Oh.
So it, all we have to do is get it on their radar...
Right.
Uh, to do that, um, so, um, and he said he wouldn't change the, the bid package, just make sure that we, we get on their schedule to, to do the roads.
It's just John's boss?
Um, he, he's the, he's the senior engineer, I think, over there, I don't know if that's John's boss, or, or who.
I think he used to be John's boss at DOT.
Yeah, yeah.
Where he is now.
Uh, yeah, I don't know what, what his level is over there, but, um...
Okay, well, it sounds like we're moving forward with that then, right? We're doing all three, and the maintenance, right? Both packets together?
Yeah, the whole thing, um, and, and do that, um, but then one of the things that we might wanna look into, um, is to check the state's preferred contractors list, to see what they have on there for contractors, so, because if, if we use one of them on the preferred, uh, state contract list, we don't have to bid these projects out. We can just ask, have one of them to, to bid on it. Um, I even have four contacts that we can send and see if they would want to, uh, to bid on it, and give us a, a price for that. Um, but he said, "Yeah, it'd be, be easier just to go through NCDOT and, and, and piggyback on, on the, the services and..."
And, and I think we, we discussed that, the only part I had a concern about going with them is, we're not building a relationship with one of the other contractors. If we're now in the business of doing roads, you build that relationship from a major standpoint, and every year, why, it's part of my program.
Yeah, but you're also saving money when you go with NCDOT.
Yeah.
You might have to, you know, pay some big bucks.
To your point, things are pretty bad, yeah, was it big bucks we were gonna change?
Well, I don't know, we'd have, we'd have to see what we, we got, because, you know, we didn't get any bids for this, this last...
Should we still get a bid from DOT?
Um, no, they would just, they would just include us in, in one of their resurfaces. No, they would just, they would just include us in, in one of their resurfaces.
And we pay them, we pay them whatever.
And you pay the difference of whatever that is.
Difference of what?
How, whatever they charge to, to piggyback that project, I don't know exactly what that is. You know, they'll, they'll charge you for the price of the asphalt, the concrete and stuff like that.
Two hundred thousand.
Okay.
We are then two hundred thousand.
Okay.
But in theory, we're going to get their pricing.
Their better price, yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense.
You get a preferred pricing from.
But at what, what point do we really get into vetting this? Because whether it's a relationship building or, you know, with DOT or who we go with.
Right.
Long term and stuff, and we're looking at once all thirty roads. And what does it really cost? Because even in my discussion with Chris, she said that we've never really done the vetting of, what does it cost to do roads? Which goes back to the, we haven't raised taxes in some years, can we do it? And we're assuming Powell fund stays in place. And if it goes away, what, what is our contingency for that? But I don't know if we've ever vetted what it costs.
If it goes away, we're in the exact same position we are today without, when we didn't have Powell funds. Because DOT was, has never, is never going to do any roads in Marvin.
Right.
In the subdivisions.
Right.
It's hard enough to get, you saw what it took to get.
Oh, they've already said that in a sense, and I think in a letter that we received.
So if, if Powell goes away, and we, and, you know, whatever council is around then says, you know what? This isn't working out, we're in no different position. We can't do something, because we're not getting it done now.
Right, I'm just saying that the five cent thing, I think, is pie in the sky.
Well, that's my point, that council would have to, let's say it's ten years from now, that council will have to decide, are we going to do, let's say Broadmoor's up right there, it's a subdivision. Are we going to do Broadmoor? If so, we got to raise the taxes, is that something we want to get into? You know, that's, you know, if we're, if we're speculating on whether or not Powell funds.
But we already know we're going to take over thirty, thirty miles of road, we know that.
Doesn't mean we have to repay thirty miles of road.
No, I, I don't think it does, but at some point we will.
Right. And, and, and remember, you, you're not just counting on, that's where people run into problems. They just look at the power funds, that's only one third. They're still putting two thirds, because we've been financially astute in being able to have that. So we still have over two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Right.
Okay, then they gave us enough, that's three hundred thousand, so we can say, Joe, we're not going to do Firethorn next year, it's scheduled. But, you know, we're going to have to wait to, you know.
Right.
We're going to do it every twenty years instead of every fifteen.
As a neighborhood of different neighborhoods and stuff, and, and we have a program of our, what we call it, the twenty year plan.
Right, right.
Am I happy as a resident of XYZ neighborhood saying that I'm on the twenty year plan and I'm way down on the list? I'm paying the same taxes as everyone else, but everyone else is getting a road? Is there a way that we could consider fast tracking that to a, a smaller timeframe? Because we all want to get our roads done and when they need to be done, not having to have to wait for it. And that's, that's my point, we're all going to be paying the same taxes, but because of the arbitrary, I guess it's a science to it, the AMT looks at it and says, okay, your roads, and here is the list. But if I'm down at the bottom of this list and I'm paying this tax, and I'm saying, I got to wait twenty years before I ever really get.
What did you get last year?
I guess that's the.
Yeah, you got nothing.
Well, I know, but I, I'm just saying is we're, we're, but I know, but if, if we want to, we want to really be, if we're going to be in the road business, which is what we're doing.
Right.
Then don't we want?
What we did.
What we did, yeah, we're in the road business. My, my, well, no, because I've talked to a lot of towns when I go in to talk to them, and some of them are in the road business or not, but they're certainly not at five cents.
No, they're not.
Yeah.
We're, we're very, we're very, very fortunate how we.
So you believe, you believe we can stay at five cents and, and stay in the road business?
Joe, we had over two hundred and fifty.
I'm just asking the question.
We had over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we didn't allocate this year. So Powell went away, that would replace it right then.
Okay, but, but then for the next year, and then it's just, again, if I'm that person way down on the list based on AMT's decision, then I'm not going to get my.
But I'm not going to do anybody's road in five years because we're getting the program.
I understand.
We had a plan.
I'm just saying you want to be fair to all residents.
I am being fair. We're getting the worst of the worst, we're doing them first, that's fair.
No, okay.
Stuff you brought up months ago, buddy, it's like it never goes away.
Well, it doesn't, because I, I do want to be fair, that's why I have issues with, with getting into power with funds, because DOT changing their rules.
Well, yeah.
DOT changed the rules, there wasn't a state rule or anything that came down, they basically said.
You were sold and you were good.
Yeah.
What's that?
When we got into it, you said you were good with it.
Well, I mean, the council voted on it, yeah, I'm just saying it is.
I looked at you, I asked you if you were good.
I, I don't know if I was good at that, I, my concern, my concern, no, 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 my concern back then, in all fairness, and my concern back then was that, and why I sent it back, Powell bill back, is because.
Joe.
You, Ron, may I please have a.
Now, hear my comment.
My, my point is, is when, when I was making that decision, it was going to be, okay, DOT, for all the new developments, they were going to be taken care of by Marvin, all the old developments, and that's where I thought it wasn't fair and stuff. But if you can show me a program, we're going to take care of all of it, when it needs to be done, not saying, oh, well, we don't have the money this year and it's just not going to be done, I just think it's, I, I think it's a little, because we're all paying the same tax.
One, we, we said a third party would make the judgment calls, which, which they, they're doing a good job. They did, they did the, the evaluation, and many of the roads don't get touched, okay? So, none of us made that decision, it was a third party. You know, two, right now, it's honestly free money to us as a town, and we'd be fools not to take it.
Right.
Now, I've given it back, which you just alluded to.
No, 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 I'm not saying given it back, I said, when I did send it back, it was because of that reasoning.
Five hundred thousand, whenever it was.
No, it was only like two hundred thousand.
And you were adamant for two years, Joe, that's five hundred thousand dollars.
And.
And that's, that's something that we could have gone to Firethorn and did just a year.
I, I understand that, but you're committing to a whole different, you're committing to the roads when you haven't vetted, vetted. I mean, we estimated from AMT, hold on a second.
We vetted, Joe.
Wait a minute, okay. We had, we had estimated for AMT, who, who suggested to us that your development, your own neighborhood, was going to be X. It came in at twice the price.
Because one person bid on it. If I knew I was the only bidder, it would be the most.
They didn't know, they didn't know they were going to be the only bidder.
So Joe wants to raise taxes.
They didn't know. No, Ron, I'm not, Ron.
You want to be fair to everybody, right?
No, Ron, I'm not saying that, you're putting words in my mouth, I'm asking you a question, start thinking about this, if you are.
We're working on spreadsheets, you know, everybody look at.
We all looked at the spreadsheet show, we all.
I'm just saying.
We never, we never put five hundred thousand dollars back, you did.
You, you guys continue to put words in my mouth and stuff, who I'm hanging around with and my buddies and stuff, you guys can keep doing that, that's fine.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
But you were good with it when we did it, it's on public, it's.
We'll go back and, we'll go back and look at it and stuff, I mean, it's just, no, I'm just saying that we're going to do it, we got to take over, that was my point. If we're going to do it, we got to take over all the roads.
Pump the brakes, pump the brakes, pump the brakes.
All right, guys, have your fun, all right, well, are we done with update number?
I don't know, you were wanting to drug it out.
So God forbid, you know, challenge this, this council on, on something as simple as, you know, getting in the road.
What's the direction for the bids?
He was part of it, I, I, I think he was here for, we've talked about it like thirty times.
What's the amount of the, the one that came in, or nothing came in?
Nothing came in.
Came in.
Nothing came in.
What's our engineer think it would be?
He didn't say.
An informal policy, though? Under five hundred?
He didn't say that either.
Okay.
So, I mean.
Because that controls the bid process too.
Well, the bid, the bids, as they are right now.
It would have to be over five hundred to be in the formal.
Right, the bids right now are three thousand, three hundred, thirty thousand or more, except certain specialty work.
The informal.
Yeah, this is what, what they had written the bid package to be.
Okay.
We also got like three hundred and something thousand dollars from them for like Weddington Chase, that we take over X amount of roads there. They're going to give us three hundred to do all the roads, yeah. We're going to do like a trip, because the roads, they, they have a liability of some sort, and so we're going to do a little bit of swap, if you will, they're saying we'll offer.
I'm making sure we're, we're following the, the policy procedure.
That's good.
But what, but what they're saying, DOT, part of our, part of Powell negotiation is not only are they giving us money, but they agreed to do over three hundred thousand dollars of roads in Weddington Chase, but somewhere else too.
Yeah.
Oak Brook.
Oak Brook.
They're doing Oak Brook.
Oak Brook, Weddington Chase and Canterbury.
To bring them up to.
And maintenance for all three of them.
All three of them, they pulled those together, remember they were in separate bids, the, the first bid packet, bid package was just on Canterbury Creek.
Right.
And then Weddington Chase and Oak, Oak Brook would be next.
DOT is giving us the money, so aside from the Powell funds, we're getting DOT is dropping us a check over three hundred thousand.
So instead, yeah, you got three hundred and fifty for that, plus they were going to look at doing some money from Oak Brook, which we got to follow up.
Uh, Oak Brook's in here.
So that's money that we wouldn't have had, you know, this is like bonus money.
So when you talk about numbers, Joe.
Yeah.
No, 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 I, I get that part, because it's, it's like, it's their roads, we went through the same thing in our neighborhood. If you want us to turn it over to them, the state, the state required us to bring it up to their standard, well, we did that. So why couldn't it be the same? And that's what we've done here, is we've said.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, I know, I, I get that, I get that, but I'm just saying, I don't know, if you're looking at the thirty roads and vetting and the process of getting, I just think, you know, it, I don't think it's been properly vetted.
At the wall and see what will stick, I don't know what you're talking about.
No, 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 no.
We've got engineers, we've got.
Well, an engineer that was off, completely off by twice.
It was a bid.
And then, and then you got no people bidding and stuff, so.
Well, but they didn't.
The sky's not.
What's your direction?
The drama's too much.
Proceed.
Is he DOT?
Yeah, proceed with NCDOT.
And, and the other, you said to also look at the other state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So review action items, next up, ten.
Okay. I hope I have everything, I'm not really sure, I was firing very well.
I got confused too, Barbie, it's okay.
Um, I have, let Mary know if you, if anything odd is going on in Belgrove and Windmar subdivisions. Um, you've asked the attorney to investigate deleted emails from the previous administrator. Council is to review the pedestrian oriented section of the LUP. And, um, Mary and the attorney are going to review the weekend signs for compliance and off-road signs and add language regarding the light project signs.
Projection signs.
Projection.
Projection?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I may have forgotten something, but y'all can tell me if I did.